Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this Wednesday, April 25th, meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. For those of you who are willing and able, I want to invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, follow, I'm sorry, the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank you today for your kindness and the blessings you give us. We thank you for our administrative professionals whose talent and skills are essential to our mission of service each day. As we take time to recognize them for their support and contributions, may we continue to inspire them and all of our staff to new heights of excellence and service to our community. As always, we seek your guidance and direction in the matters presented before us today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.8 has been rescheduled for your next meeting on May 9th, and the attachment for item 13.05 has been added to your materials.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioner, will you all join me at the podium for special presentation? I want to invite forward a group of distinguished guests who are joining us this afternoon right before finals begin. We want to obviously wish them well at that, but if the President of Tallahassee Community College, Dr. Jim Murdaugh, and the Tallahassee Community College Women's Basketball Team, please join us here at the podium. We have an awesome privilege to present a proclamation and a key to the city, to this distinguished group of young people for a pretty outstanding recognition. For those of you all who don't know, Coach Padell, also thank you for being here. I want to present a proclamation, but first a couple of comments. This past March, the TCC Lady Eagles won the Women's Basketball Junior College National Championship after defeating Trinity Valley in Lubbock, Texas. This is the first national championship of any Tallahassee Community College sports team since 1994, or 25 years almost. I'd like to invite those in attendance, and they have joined us, to receive a proclamation and a key to the city, which is a rare recognition that we offer here once a year in City Hall. In fact, we typically make a key to the city presentations toward the summer, but since all y'all are going to be gone, or many of you may be out of Tallahassee, we wanted you to be able to fully participate and enjoy this recognition. And so first, the proclamation. And it reads, "The Tallahassee Community College defeated Trinity Valley Community College 69 to 51 to win the NJCAA Division One Women's Basketball National Championship. And whereas it is the Eagles' first women's basketball national championship, and whereas it is the Tallahassee Community College's first national title in any sport since 1994, and whereas the Tallahassee Community College finished with a school-record 29 wins, going 10 and 1 in the last 11 games, and whereas the City of Tallahassee congratulates the Tallahassee Community College players and coaches for their success as the 2018 NJCAA Division One Women's Basketball National Championship. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, joined by the Tallahassee City Commission, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do recognize Tallahassee Community College Women's Basketball Team for their great accomplishment in winning the 2018 NJCAA Division One Women's Basketball Championship." I also want to amend this presentation by also presenting to the TCC Eagles Women's Basketball 2018 NJCAA National Championship, a key to the city. The City of Tallahassee hereby awards you this key to the city on this distinguished day. Will you all please join me on a very, very well-deserved recognition? Please. Thank you. Before I invite up Coach and Mr. President, I want to invite forward former Chairman of the Tallahassee Community College Board of Trustees, my colleague, Commissioner Curtis Richardson, for a few remarks.
I just got a promotion.
Wait, was, you were on the board?
Foundation.
Foundation Board. Foundation Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone that's here. I want to say congratulations, first of all, to the team. We are so proud of you all. As the Mayor mentioned, I have had the pleasure of serving probably for the past eight years or so as a member of the Tallahassee Community College Foundation Board, and served as its leader for the past year. And I can tell you, there is no more hard-working group than the Board of the Foundation at Tallahassee Community College. And our job is to raise the funds that help support these young ladies and other students at Tallahassee Community College as they matriculate through the college to earn their early education, I would say. We expect that all of them will continue at some point. And so it's been a real privilege for me to have served in that role and to have worked with President Murdaugh and see the kind of leadership that he has provided for the college and the progress that it's made over the years, and what it does for all of our young people in preparing them for the future ahead. So, Mr. President, thank you. Coach, thank you all so much for what you have done, what you have done for these young ladies in teaching them through basketball, but more importantly, for the, preparing them for the game of life. So, thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to honor and recognize the success of these student athletes. And we're very proud of them. And very proud that we have an athletic director in the form of Rob Chaney, who does such an amazing job, who hired our coach, Coach Q, several years ago, who also does an amazing job. And one of the little facts I like to share with you, because within our college it's important, 100% of our student athletes complete their education at Tallahassee Community College. And that's not by accident. That's because our coaches and our athletic director work with these women and with the other women and men who are in our sports programs to stress that they are student athletes. And so we're very proud of them. Many of them are headed out of here going on to greater things already, and we are so proud of everything they've done. And it means so much to us that you all would take a few minutes to honor this success story in our community. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Let's get a quick time.
Oh. It's a pleasure and an honor, first of all, giving honor to God and, you know, to these young ladies. I would not be standing here if it weren't for them, them buying into the process, them buying into the hard work. I tell people all the time, I'm not the easiest person to play for. I hold them accountable for every little thing that they do. And they pull through best performance from a team as far as coming together and fighting and showing resilience and playing hard for each other that I've seen in my career, and it's going on to 19 years. But basically, they've done it on the floor, they're doing it in the classroom, and they also have done it in the community with helping others. So, I'm very proud, but we sure appreciate how you've taken us in, and we hope that this continues to lead to more college successes. We're praying that our baseball team will do the same thing here shortly, because they've made it to the state tournament. And we just thank you for your support, and thank you for today. It means a lot to us.
Of course. Thank you very much. Let's get a quick time.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right. Congratulations.
Positive light on our city.
We have, we have one more thing to present to Mayor Gillum.
Uh-oh, wait a minute now. You should know better than to bring just one of those.
We want you to be a part of the team for life, and so we hope that you enjoy it, being part of the championship team.
That means a lot. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's get together.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Four, one. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you very much.
That was great.
Yeah. Congratulations, young lady.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Hey. I'm kidding, Jersey. I'm kidding.
So, what, one of the reasons why we presented Mayor Gillum with the jersey was, right before the national championship game, my assistant coach was trying to say, "I gotta get everybody together, gotta get everybody together." And I'm like, "We're about to get together, getting ready to play. What, what's going on?" And so he brings out his phone, and Mayor Gillum is on the phone, and he is wishing the girls best of luck going into it. And so, we want to say you are our magic piece to winning. And so, we want you to be a part of this for the rest of your life. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. You got some motive. All right. Thank you all very much. And again, congratulations to our hometown team, Tallahassee Community College. And you all are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I know that you also have other things to do, and you've got finals coming up next week. So, we want to collectively wish you all well as you round out this year. Thank you very much. Commissioners, we're now on to the portion of the meeting for Citizens Input 7.01. Mr. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers to be heard on un-agended, I'm sorry, on agended items?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a number of speakers on several different items. The first speaker will be Brian Kelly on item 1301, which is your parks update. As, as he comes forward, I'll remind him and other speakers that they'll have, each have three minutes for remarks. There is light just on this side of your podium that'll be green and turn yellow and red, and I'll also let you know when that time has expired. If you'd give your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate that, name and address, and then you may begin.
All right. Thank you, everyone. My name is Brian Kelly. I'm with 4113 Beckett Road. I'm here to-
Could you move the mic a little closer? I'm sorry.
I'd be glad to. No problem. I'm here to speak on behalf of item number 1301, the new parks. I'm an elected supervisor in our Southwood community. I'm also our current Chairman of our Southwood CDD. As you know, Southwood community has been an open and very welcoming neighborhood over the years. We have hosted many annual events such as the Tallahassee Turkey Trot, the Fourth of July fireworks, and upcoming Pops in the Park. In this role of the Southwood CDD Chairman, I've had the pleasure to work on behalf of more than 1,700 homes, three schools, and many businesses that represent our Greater Southwood CDD. Again, that's the community district. We have worked hard over the past year, plus to build a consensus between our different stakeholders. Our stakeholders include our Southwood HOA, our developer St. Joe, our Independence Landing Partner, Brett Ketchum's here on their behalf, the community leaders of Southwood, the Greater Southwood area, and of course, the City of Tallahassee Parks. We would like the City of Tallahassee to know that we are very much in support of the city's efforts to use the land donated by St. Joe Company to build the city park in the Southwood community just south of our area of Florida. Again, we're very much in support of that. Does anyone have any questions on my behalf?
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Wilson, and then Charles Belvin.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, Bill Wilson, 1816 Old Ford Drive. I want to speak just briefly to the Affordable Housing Inclusionary Zoning Proposal, in that this is the first one, and the ordinance and policy have been on the books for about 10 years now. And from looking at it in terms of the development of this agreement, that policy and ordinance needs some, some looking at. And I think the Affordable Housing Study Group suggested that that needs to be revisited, and we also have the issue where the county doesn't have an ordinance. And doing something where we have a common approach to the inclusionary issue is something that, that we ought to be looking at in the, in the short term. As to this specific agreement, the issue that, that I would raise, your policy says that the inclusionary period shall be not less than 10 years. It doesn't limit it to 10 years. And we have a very economically segregated community, and part of the purpose of this inclusionary zoning is to provide for economic diversity within the new developments. And to only provide that diversity for 10 years seems to me to, to not be where we ought to be policy-wise. And would encourage you to amend this agreement and make that affordability on these properties in perpetuity. You're setting some owner up for a huge windfall 10 years down the road, to the detriment of the policy of the economic diversity. And I don't know that, I think that's good public policy. So, that's, that's a thought that, that I think that you ought to take a look at as you look at, at this agreement. That 10 years is, is way too short. If you're getting help from the Affordable Housing Finance Corporation with low-income tax credits, those are 30-year terms, and some of them are 50-year terms. So, 10 years is awfully, awfully short in terms of providing for that kind of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, thank you. I think Bill makes a very good point, and I would like to encourage the manager and staff. Mr. Manager, if you all could take a look at that and maybe come back to us with a recommendation.
We'd be happy to. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Charles Belvin on item 1301, to be followed by Jonathan Cantor, also on 1301, Parks Update.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Charles Belvin. Now, I put my business address down, which is here in Tallahassee. My personal residence is in Lamont. Is it, am I still okay?
No, no, we don't want to hear from you, Charlie. Uh-uh.
I'm a third-generation Tallahasian, so, yeah. I'm here to talk about, in support of the Disc Golf 1301. I've been playing Disc Golf for about three years now, and I have to tell you, Commissioners, I'm an average player. I'm not all that proud of that. But when you complete 10,000 steps at Tom Brown Park, going up and down the hills, that's something to be really proud of. The course has recently been redesigned, and it is now the talk of the town. I mean, it's unbelievable how popular it's become, and now the course is just packed all the time. We recently had a tournament there with about 200 players, two-thirds to three-quarters of which came in from out of town. I mean, it's become almost famous. Jack McLean Park, the other Disc Golf Park here in town, is the number, I think it's in the top five most difficult courses in the, in the state of Florida. They're famous. The problem is, they're now, they're now packed, okay? And, and they're very challenging, and I really want to talk in support of perhaps providing other alternate courses, smaller, more family-friendly, kids and families, to give it a little bit of, of relief. The tournament we just had, 200, it was sold out in a week. That's how popular the sport has become. So, I think there's a real opportunity here. And on top of that, Commissioners, Disc Golf is such an inexpensive thing to do. You put in a concrete pad, you go 300 feet through the woods, you drop a basket, you're ready to play. So, you know, I really think, I really hope you'll consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Jonathan Cantor on this item, and then followed by Steve Kahn.
Yes, I'm Jonathan Cantor. I'm 4300 Buttercup Way. I'm a senior, and I'm joined by others with the same interests, and that's pickleball. We're interested in the outdoor courts, like Georgia Mountain has, like North Carolina has, like Higgins Beach and Key West has, and hundreds and hundreds of other cities have put in place actual regulation size that smells like, tastes like, and looks like a pickleball court. For those of you who don't know what pickleball is, it's a paddle sport on a tennis court that's quite a bit smaller. It's played by everybody from 11 years old to 86, and there's 2.8 million people across the United States that play it, and the growth rate is 12% a year. And I can tell you, and we can tell you from playing here in Tallahassee, that that growth rate is at least 12%. Unfortunately, well, let me back up. Fortunately, we have indoor courts at McLean, Summa Cullum, and other places. Fortunately, the Ruckuson Parks folks are top-notch, and they provided as much support as possible. But during summer, seniors are out of business, so the kids are off and they get to play. So, we need outdoor courts. When you think of the growing population, and I think Gil announced on Channel 27 recently how we're a magnet now for retiring communities and so forth, if you want healthy, fit people that after a three-hour session of playing pickleball, basically run about 2.75 miles or steps worth of energy, mental agility, after three hours of playing, you're, you've been really focusing on decision-making, and also, it's a social game. I've met in the last six months, starting in the senior center and now in some of the park areas, I've met tens and tens and tens of people. We have a lot of players, and I just encourage that we put real pickleball courts out, and we come up to the level that so many other cities have helped their communities, especially their senior centers.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah. I don't know if we have any more speakers on this, but I can tell you, at the closing ceremony of the senior games this year, pickleball was the rage. You know, they were telling me everywhere I turned, "Commissioner, we need to get some more pickleball courts. They're too full. We can't get to them." And I had never heard of pickleball. I didn't know what it was. But apparently, it is a very popular sport, and we, we would be doing the right thing, especially by our seniors, to get additional pickleball courts in this community. So, I'm all for it.
Steve Kahn.
Commissioners, Steve Kahn, 200 West College Avenue. I'm here to talk about two related issues under 1304, the parking, public parking increases in plan. I have three points to make. The first one is, it appears to me from talking to your staff and reading the agenda, that the retail merchants in downtown Tallahassee are the motivating force to prohibit feeding the meters, because they need access to their buildings, to their retail establishments. And there are people who work downtown, not me, I rent two spaces in a garage, but there are people who park downtown, who work downtown, that feed the meters for eight hours. And that obviously has an effect on the retail merchants. There's no study showing that doubling the fees as proposed by your staff is going to decrease this feeding one bit, but you do have it, in your, in your toolkit, a way to do it, and I'm going to suggest that to you. In my opinion, going from 25 cents to 50 cents an hour in 2009 had zero effect. I mean, I've lived here for 50 years, and I see that. And if feeding is the problem, then here's, here's a remedy. If Chief DeLeo, or Mrs., I'm sorry, Sergeant Davis, says that the manpower problem is what's preventing them from doing it, then I have a remedy for that, too. And I've talked about this with Sergeant Davis. The parking enforcement technicians make two or three rounds every day, giving parking tickets. Your ordinance currently prohibits feeding, ordinance 20.106, and that was confirmed by your staff yesterday when I talked to the young lady in the real estate department. So, what you do is, this cost me $1 at Dollar Tree. This box of chalk cost me $1 at Dollar Tree. I'll be glad to give them to the city to start the program. You take one piece of chalk, you put it in this thing, you give it to every one of those three parking enforcement technicians. They go around, when they're given the tickets, and they go like this, to the tire. It's called chalking a tire, and Sergeant Davis acknowledged that. The next time the technician goes around, if the car is still parked there, they can issue a $25 ticket, or a $50 ticket, or whatever amount you decide needs to be done for that. Okay, so, my second point that I want to talk about is, your staff is recommending raising $600,000 for new meters and other improvements. And they want to borrow it from the Internal Loan Fund, which has about 2 million bucks in it. Okay, that's essentially going to cut your rainy day fund, or whatever you want to call it, it's referred to as the Internal Loan Fund, by, by a third. And that's not going to leave you enough money if you really need to buy a fire engine. Okay? And this, in my opinion, is no way to run a railroad. I'm asking you first to budget an item of 600, or whatever it is, go and buy the meters, buy the stuff that they want you to buy, and then see how much money you can raise by doubling it from 50 cents to a dollar an hour.
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
Okay. My last, may I have 30 seconds more, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. My last point is, I want to correct a material misstatement in the staff analysis. I normally wouldn't do this in public, but on page two, in the penultimate paragraph, it says, "One dollar an hour will remain below comparable rates of other mid-sized cities." Well, the fact is that Gainesville charges 50 cents an hour for on-street parking, Jacksonville charges 50 cents an hour for on-street parking, and putting that statement in the staff analysis for your consideration is, it's misleading and it's a misstatement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Eric Agriello on item 1301, your parks update, and then Tish Cunningham, also on parks.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Agriello. I am the President of the Tallahassee Disc Golf Association, 3511 Barnstaple Drive, here in Tallahassee. I am here to speak on that 1301 regarding parks, and yes, I'm in full support on behalf of the Tallahassee Disc Golf Association. We would love to see a couple more courses go in in town. As was mentioned, the sport is growing rapidly. We are seeing a lot more traffic at the parks, which is great, and I think it would only be great to have two more parks, or so that if we can get a couple courses in for, that are family-friendly, recreation-friendly, it would also introduce the sport to those locals that are more familiar with those parks, wherever these are going to be. When you're talking about Tom Brown Park, I don't know that everybody from the other side of town gets over there to play and that sort of thing, or to get to Jack McLean to play there. And if we can introduce the courses in those other areas, we might get more people out to play and really grow the sport even more here in Tallahassee. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Next is Tish Cunningham on your parks update as well, and then followed by Darwin Gamble.
Hello, I'm Tish Cunningham. I live at 963 Richardson Road, here in Tallahassee. Pickleball began in Tallahassee almost seven years ago at the senior center. Since then, the city has added many other venues for pickleball play around town. With the addition of new parks in Tallahassee, I hope you will consider providing designated pickleball courts as the numbers of pickleball players has continued to grow, especially for seniors. As a retiree, pickleball has added tremendously to my quality of life, in addition to several of my friends who play pickleball. I'd like to thank the city, Ashley Edwards, Glenn Howell, and the senior center for providing city venues for pickleball play. As a retiree, it has meant a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Darwin Gamble, speaking on item 1304, your parking update, followed by Zipi Whartonburg.
Good afternoon, Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court, and I'm here to speak against the parking fee increases downtown, which is unusual for me. I typically don't complain about taxes and fees. In fact, I even supported that property tax increase a few years ago.
city venues for pickleball play. As a retiree, it has meant a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Darwin Gamble, speaking on item 1304, your parking update, followed by Zippy Whartonburg.
Good afternoon, Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court, and I'm here to speak against the parking fee increases downtown, which is unusual for me. I typically don't complain about taxes and fees. In fact, I even supported that property tax increase a few years ago, and I'm a homeowner. But the parking fee increases are a little bit different. In 2016, this commission abolished the business license tax, even though businesses disproportionately benefit from city services. Now a subgroup, or excuse me, a subset of that same group, wants to pass on the cost of improving the parking services to, well, a whole lot of people who come downtown for a whole lot of reasons, including to attend meetings like this. You start these city commission meetings at 4 o'clock on Wednesday afternoon, the county starts those meetings at 3 o'clock on Tuesday afternoon, when the legislature's in town, that outfit meets off and on throughout the day. It's very hard for an ordinary person to attend any of these meetings, and now you're going to double the parking fees downtown. Here's what you may want to consider: reinstate that business license tax, then earmark the portion that the downtown merchants pay, and use that to pay for those improvements they want. Or you could reinstate the tax and just eliminate parking fees altogether, but either one of those options would be better than adopting that ridiculous ordinance. Steve Kahn had some good ideas, too.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor.
Commissioner Miller.
I wanted to add something to what our gentleman just commented. You can get your parking tickets validated if you come to a meeting and you can park for free. We made it free to park to come to city commission meetings a couple, oh gosh, probably five or six years ago. So just on that one thing, if you do want to come to a meeting, which we'd love to have you, then you can get your parking ticket validated.
Also, Mr. Mayor, parking's free after 4 o'clock and on the weekends, is that changing in the new ordinance, Mr. Goode?
No, sir.
It's a little bit later than 4 o'clock, Commissioner, it's 5. 5 o'clock?
There's no change to the times.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Zippy Whartonburg.
Yeah, I'm Zippy Whartonburg, and I live at 3625 Gettysburg Court, just moved there a month ago from Havana to get back into town to be near these pickleball courts, in part. Pickleball is growing exponentially in Tallahassee, and Tallahassee's not keeping up with it. We need more pickleball courts. It's not a lot of fun, we're losing people. It's not a lot of fun to go and sign up, and then have to sit 30 to 40 minutes to wait to play a 10-minute game, and then go back again and sign up and wait another 30 or 40 minutes to play another 10-minute game. We've got to have, as you can see, more pickleball courts. It is an outlet for seniors. A lot of us, I don't know what we'd do if we didn't have pickleball. We would be lost. We don't have anybody to talk to, we go to pickleball, though, and we do, and then we go out to eat and have a good time. We need more pickleball courts. You know, y'all ought to come out and play with us, and you'd be for more pickleball courts, too. Come on!
Thank you.
Thank you. I think she might have just made us go over the edge on that position.
Mayor, I'm just going to let you know, I'm going to call her every few speakers just to keep us lively.
Yes, indeed.
Our next speaker is Edward Hollifield, and then Stanley Sims. Dr. Hollifield on item 1303, your public safety update.
Okay. Can somebody hand these out? That allowed? That's a very important document that you're looking at, which came out only yesterday, regarding public safety. Nothing is more relevant regarding public safety than the hospital that we have to go to. You know, the police, when they're injured, they have to go to the hospital, most of the time TMH. Maybe it should be all the time TMH. Now LeapFrog has been around for a long time, it's what Consumer Reports uses to compare hospitals. And I can tell you that some things have, I mean, we have a problem, so far as TMH is concerned. We have declining public safety in that hospital, according to LeapFrog. There are two evaluations per year. The highest evaluation that TMH received in 2014 was an A. 2015, highest evaluation, B. 2016, highest evaluation, C. 2017, highest evaluation, C. 2018, highest evaluation, C. We have declining quality at TMH. Meanwhile, we pay Mark O'Brien $1.2 million to run a C-rated hospital. $1.2 million, plus a bonus. And we give the people that run it access to more than half-billion dollars' worth of access, assets, for a dollar a year, through a really racist lease agreement that I've spoken about in the past. But it's our hospital, it's not like Capital Regional. And it's interesting, by the same organization, Capital Regional received a grade of A. So we got the city-owned hospital receiving a grade of C that we virtually give away, and you got Capital Regional getting a grade of A, that doesn't receive anything from y'all. And you have to keep in mind that the city owns the land, the buildings, and everything inside the buildings. $1.2 million for Mark O'Brien, you got janitors there getting $9.25 an hour, which reportedly makes them eligible for food stamps. If you see that document, there are five measures of infection, TMH was deficient on four of them, four out of five. If I were a police officer, God forbid, and had to go, and you know, I got shot in the abdomen and had to go to surgery, I hope that wouldn't take me to TMH.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
Not with these numbers. So in summary, I'm hoping that you will at least read this, I'll be glad to send you some more information, other Democrat won't print anything on it, that's an interesting thing. I hope all those ads don't have anything to do with it. But I don't see why TMH isn't audited like everything else. It should be audited based on patient safety.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
And if Consumer Reports indicates that the hospital is declining in quality, then that's something that all of us should be concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hollifield. Next speaker. Next is Stanley Sims, on item 1303, public safety, followed by Thomas Asbury.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, my name is Stanley Sims, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Speaking of the Tallahassee Democrat, the Tallahassee Democrat wrote an article about our law enforcement, our first responders, about how they viewed Chief DeLeo. Eighty-three of those that were surveyed said that Chief DeLeo is a liar. Eighty-six of our law enforcement officers don't believe that upper management will back them up. I also read an article, Commissioner Richardson, where you made the comment that there is no corruption at City Hall. You are a guy that I have great respect for, you know my mama, and my mama, and you know me. I remember when you were trying to develop a Gaston County Health Council over in Gaston County, and there were some environmental barriers that we had to address. So I'm, with a lot of coaching of how I approach you all now, I'm taking a different road in doing so. So I want to, with respect, to say, if we do not have a corruption problem, we do have a credibility problem. And here is when I demonstrate that we have a credibility problem, and I'm not going to call this gentleman's name, when he's politically connected, he has violated city security protocols in this building, and nothing happened. I violated security protocols in this building for a sum of three and a half minutes, and every time I come in here, and it's not a city thing, I have to have a police detail. I just got a public records request today, Commissioner Richardson. My grandmother's saying, "If you don't tell the truth, you're lying." They have not just lied to me, but they have lied to you. They told you that a home association did never exist, about 30-some people showed up one night and said, "We exist." They lied to me. They said, "There is no other avenue for to fund your program but the CHSP process," but 14 months later, there's a program proposal evaluation tool. I was lied, my last lie came from Christian Doolin. Christian Doolin told me, he said, "Mr. Sims, we're very sorry for the delay that your program is because..." And please, Commissioner Nancy Miller, I love Allison Tant with all of my being, she is an awesome woman. I support her program, Commissioner Maddox, 4,000%. But the passion that she has is the same passion that I have, being a black, ex-felon, who wants to make a better community for individuals just like me.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
May I have 30 seconds?
Yes, sir.
And if Allison Tant, with her passion, can get her program approved from October to rat now, she didn't have to sign a waiver, Commissioner Richardson, to sign away all of her rights, she didn't have to wait 30 days. I don't know the answer to that. If it's not corruption, something's going on, and something's not right. We elect you to set policy, we've got a culture here that's got two roads. The ethics department, hands are tied, so you're my only release. I've asked to meet with you all, and Commissioner Maddox, you're supposed to be letting me know. These are my issues, I want you to look at my proposal, not look at what they tell you, because the credibility is not there. I'd like for you to do like Commissioner Ziffer did, he sat down with me, and I went through everything.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sims, I appreciate it.
And I apologize.
No worries, no worries. Next speaker. Thomas Asbury, on item 1305, which is your canopy inclusionary housing item, and followed by Rhett Turnquist.
Hello, my name's Thomas Asbury, address 4708 Capitol Circle Northwest. I'm here to talk about 13.05, the Inclusionary Workforce Housing Program. I want to quickly go through the product we've designed for this development to meet the needs of the ordinance. But before I do that, I want to take a quick moment and thank the city staff for all their efforts over the last year and a half, with a special thanks to Michael Parker, who you'll hear from a little later. We've worked close together for, like I said, a year and a half, to put a plan and process in place to give this program the greatest chance for success. We, as the builder developer, as well as members of this community, are honored to be a part of the program. We believe in it, and we understand the tremendous need for it. Home prices seem to do nothing but go up and up right now, income and wages are not matching it, to, especially in the Northeast, this is creating an affordability issue. With that in mind, I'm proud to announce that Premier's created a product, designed for families located in the Northeast that will meet the needs and demands of the ordinance. With construction costs and development costs at all-time high, this was no easy task. I can assure you this was, I'm sorry, I'm about to get into design. This is the design part, we had to get very creative with the design and the plans. Quickly, I want to give a concept, this is the canopy, this is subdivision we're developing off Centerville and Fleischman. The red square is the subject property that we're talking about today. Here is the clubhouse that it will be in close proximity to, I assure you, we'll be putting a pickleball court there after today's discussion. This is Dove Pond, there's a connecting nine-acre greenway that connects the clubhouse to this pond, all of which these amenities will be available to the residents of this section of the neighborhood, which are under the ordinance. This is a zoomed-in view, as you can see, the middle units all front a shared park. We designed this area to kind of cultivate a sense of community, with gathering areas, fire pits, patios, interconnected sidewalks, landscaping. Here's a streetscape, kind of, it better showcases the feel and the vibe of the neighbors and the homes, as well, I'm sorry. Anyways, the idea of this is kind of to cultivate a shared area. As you can see, they're all detached, single-family homes, this is a very important aspect for us, we wanted to make sure we put our best foot forward with this program, as opposed to doing attached homes. These homes will all be built to the same FGBC Green and Energy Star specifications, we do that for all our homes. In fact, this is kind of an important note for us as a company, this is something we've kind of built our backbone on for the last 10 years. We rank currently fifth in the state for the number of homes built FGBC Green certified. So we're going to carry that forward here as well. The exterior finishes of these homes will match that of the neighboring properties, so there'll be no distinguishing difference between them. Same architectural shingles, same low-e windows, same siding, same landscaping. From a current construction standpoint, we intend to build these to the same standards we build all our homes. Lastly, I want to quickly show the footprint and the floor plan of the home we intend to build. It's designed for families, it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, approximately 1,250 square feet, it is a two-story plan, but the master's downstairs. Our goal is to pull the first permit on this, hopefully May, if not early June. So this program is very real, we're very close, we are ready to get to work, and we're ready to do our part to make this a success. So thank you.
Next speaker. Ready, Mayor? Thank you very much, next speaker. Rhett Turnquist, on item 1302, which is Greater Bond activities, and then Talithia Edwards, on the same item, and those are our last two speakers, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rhett Turnquist, I live at 220-1 Young Street. I'm here to talk about item 1302, the Greater Bond Neighborhood Activities. But first, I want to thank Assistant City Manager Cynthia Barber, who has done an excellent job in spearheading the police department, in cleaning up the loitering, open drug sales, and police department, spearheading the police department in cleaning up the loitering, open drug sales, prostitution in and around Speed Store and Robinson Store. These areas, these two areas of Bond have been ISOs for the last 50 years, and she and the Chief of Leo have placed squads in these two crime hotspots, and stopped the excessive loitering, open drug sales, and cleaned it up. So we want to thank her and salute her, and the police department in committing the resources to that initiative. The Bond community, local law enforcement, the residents, and city staff, to include LeAnn Watts and John Barber, staff have done a great job in mobilizing community interactive programs to help clean up, help make the community safe, and getting the residents involved in public safety and crime-watch initiatives. Also initiatives that will have an economic impact, and help with economic stability, sustainability, and the heart of the community needs a little work. The urban core community is economically spiraling as we speak, as you can see in the report from Ashley Edwards, the average household income in the Bond community is $17,000, which is below the poverty line. The average household income in Tallahassee is $69,000. Thirty-seven percent of the homes are vacant, only 9% of the homes owner occupied. There's been open drug sales, prostitution, loitering, addiction, and criminal, and a criminal culture element for 50-plus years in Bond. criminal culture element for fifty plus years in Bond. When you give the community a facelift with ornamental street lighting, streetscape, trees, sidewalks, crosswalks, signage, benches, and waste receptacles on the major thoroughfares to include Eugenia Street, Gamble, Saxon, Floral, Osceola, Adams Street, and Orange Avenue, you'll invite residential and commercial development. And then, young urban professionals and owners will start to return. A community redevelopment area is blighted and impoverished, and communities like Bond, Providence, South City, and Griffin Heights need the infrastructure development and the commitment from the CRA and Blueprint 2020. The dollars need to be spent in the residential community where the tax dollars come from and give these areas a facelift. Our impoverished community redevelopment areas need the CRA dollars to go back in these communities, along with blueprint dollars wherein all ships rise and the, and the resources, all ships rise with the tide of resources and help restore old Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Next speaker is Talithia Edwards, and that is the last speaker for this portion of our meeting. I do have some other speakers, but they're unengageded.
Good afternoon, I'm Talithia Edwards, I live at eighteen oh two Saxon Street, and I didn't realize pickleball was such a big rave. Maybe we can get a court over by us, we have a senior center, I mean, senior program down at Smith Williams, so we can think about that. But I'm here to talk about all of the great things that are happening in the Bond community. Mr. Rhett talked a lot about the infrastructure and the need for resources. I've been very excited to be involved as a resident in what's been going on. As you know, we're currently just finished up the blitz last week for the MPSI. And for me, as a resident, I think it's important because infrastructure and funding and all of that could take two years, right? But engaging the residents and the neigh, and the neighbors to get involved in what's going on has been important. So having and working with Neighborhood Affairs, with the MPSI, and the farmers market that's going to come to our area has really sparked some interest and some excitement in the residents, in the Greater Bond area, and we're hoping that it will continue to grow as these initiatives grow, as we continue. We're, we're about to get ready to do a Neighborhood First Plan, which I'm excited about, because it gives us the opportunity to be forward, thinking about what we want for our neighborhood. And it's us residents at the table that are going to make those decisions about, you know, how we want to see our neighborhood develop. So I support Neighborhood Affairs and the City of Tallahassee, working with its residents and neighborhood leaders, and I ask that they would continue to help engage and, and help us on our efforts to stand for our neighborhoods and advocate for what we want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Talithia.
Thank you, Talithia.
I believe that concludes our speakers on agenda items, and I want to thank each of you for coming out and expressing your thoughts. We're now, Commissioners, on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move Consent.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
I, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to item thirteen point zero one, New Parks Update, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, our nationally recognized parks and recreation programs are a big part of Tallahassee's identity. I think we heard a little of that a short while ago, and you've made quality of life a priority focus, which includes parks and recreation. To this end, staff has identified an opportunity to expand and enhance our park system in order to meet the growing demands by adding new multipurpose parks in our southeast and northwest portions of Tallahassee. Ashley Edwards is here to provide us a presentation, I think it will be very, very well received, and, and I can tell you that I'm personally very, very excited about the prospect, and we want to share this with you and seek your approval.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, under your leadership and with your continuous support, we are able to provide for the community over thirty-four hundred acres of parkland, and it's a very comprehensive park system that we have in our community. It features eighty-eight parks and facilities, and some of the amenities that we are able to provide are listed up here that you can see. And again, we try to provide a very wide variety, meet the growing and very demanding needs of our public. The interest level, as you can gauge by just the members that are here, of various factions of our users, is high, and we're very pleased to be a big part of the quality of life that they enjoy. And it's a, a part of the quality of life, I think, that our whole community enjoys. We are able to provide opportunities for activities that will support healthy lifestyles, and we provide positive and safe programs for youth in our community that help keep them from engaging in some less than positive activities that they could engage in in our community. In addition, the tournaments and events that we sponsor each year provides an economic impact to this community of over fifteen million dollars annually. We have tens of thousands of people that visit our parks and participate in our programs, and we are constantly evaluating our park usage patterns, the customer requests that we get, emerging trends, as well as facility availability to meet those needs. That way, we're able to determine how and best to allocate the programs and the resources that we have available. As you've heard, though, the demand for our active recreation amenities, especially athletic fields, surpasses the availability of our inventory, and it often results in overuse of our fields without sufficient recovery time. The popularity of our non-traditional sports that you've heard this evening, like pickleball, disc golf, sand volleyball, certainly impact the limited facilities we have in those emerging areas. In line with your priority on quality of life, we've identified opportunities to provide additional amenities to help meet these needs on two properties that are already owned by the city and our community. One is in the northwest part of our community and one in the southeast. The northwest park property here, as you can see, is bordered by Fred George Road and Mission Road. It's seventy-eight acres, and some of the amenities that we would see on this property include playground, multipurpose athletic fields, a baseball field, basketball courts, disc golf course, yes, pickleball courts, and sand volleyball courts and trails, picnic areas. We've worked closely with staff from the Planning Department and the Design Works Team to come up with some possible park layouts for you, just so you could kind of get an idea of how that would look on the property. There's one, and another option. In our southeast area of the community, we have a sixty-three acre parcel that's bordered by Schoolhouse Road, Tram Road, and Four Oaks Boulevard. Again, the amenities would be very, very similar. We would have multipurpose athletic fields, basketball courts, disc golf course, pickleball courts, picnic pavilions, playgrounds, and sand volleyball courts and trails. Potential layouts for this site are this one, Site A, and then Site B. And we're very excited to say that we've been working closely with the Resource Management Staff, and they've helped us identify funds in this year's budget that would allow us to get started, and then we will address additional funds that would be needed for, to finalize the construction process in the FY nineteen budget. A lot of this work would be done by our in-house park staff, which would be a tremendous cost savings and allow us to do even more with the funds that are available. And we do anticipate that if this item is approved, we would be able to start work and complete the parks by the end of next fiscal year, and have those open within the next fiscal year. We're requesting your approval tonight to proceed with that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, Ashley, thank you very much, as always, for the great work that you all do through the Parks Department. I wanted to hear where we are as it relates to any changes to existing parks. And I'll just give you one example, I was at the Easter, Easter egg roll for our differently abled community, and I had just sort of walked down to the skate park because I saw a gathering of a ton of people. And, yeah, I started talking to some of the folks out there, and it was like a huge issue that they, you know, concerned about updates to the skate park. It seemed heavily utilized, and I'm not sure whether or not we have a working group on that. What kind of feedback are we able to solicit from folks with regard to the utilization stats, overutilization? You mentioned obviously that we've got a deficit when it comes to field, ball fields and the recuperation time, so you've got some matrix for determining what's utilized and what's overutilized. How, how do we know and how do we determine whether or not we sort of tip the scale on some of these other amenities within existing parks?
Well, the skate, the skate park's actually a great example. We actually just, last evening as a matter of fact, met with the user group representatives from that facility. We've known for a while that there's an interest and a need for additional skate park facilities around the community. There is a facility planned as part of the, the next phase of the Famy Way extension that'll be a small skatable art area. And then, we're hopeful that as part of the Market District project that's going on up there, that we would also be able to include a skate facility there. So we're working with the groups that we have in place now to try to do what we can to enhance their experience at the existing park, as well as to get their guidance and their suggestions and their feedback as we move forward looking at additional facilities for them. And we mirror that in other areas, whether that's, you know, sand volleyball, soccer, whatever the program is. We work very closely with our constituents to try to continuously evaluate our facilities and be able to meet those needs.
Great. You have obviously heard from the pickleball community, because I see it's reflected in both those parks, which I think is a good thing. And to Talithia's point, for existing infrastructure, where we do have strong senior programming, is that something that we're able to go back and have a look at for existing infrastructure where we have lots of senior participation?
Absolutely, and actually, I'm going to need to get Talithia out there on the courts at Walker Ford, right next door to Smith Williams, because we already play pickleball on our tennis courts there. We have the multipurpose use of that court for both pickleball and tennis, and they also play inside at Walker Ford in the gymnasium there a couple of days a week, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get her hooked up. But we do, we do try to provide those amenities at all of our community centers, and especially with pickleball, we now have it available at every single one of our centers that has a gymnasium and at the senior center.
That's great. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to-
Yes, Commissioner, did we give staff, the city manager and staff, authority to move forward with these projects?
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted to commend our, our Parks and Recreation Department for being open to new sports, and it was, it, it seems like not a big thing, but it wasn't always that way with, with this government. When we did the skate park, there was great reluctance from the government to do anything outside of tradition, what was seen as traditional parks and recreation activities. And the skate park, which was one of my initiatives, we ended up getting the blueprints from Satellite Beach, Florida, and the labor all donated by Mike Blankenship, who has since passed on, so it came at very little cost to the government. So, but we fought uphill in saying, because skateboarders were seen as, as criminals and delinquents, rather than someone trying to, to-
Record.
Play a sport, right? Now, today we look back and it's, it's a very established sport. So I find, I sit here reflecting, and I think back of skateboarders in the audience with mohawks and nose rings, and our pickleball crowd, you're all rebels. And God bless you. We're, we're going to see what we can do to accommodate you.
Great. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I really would like to hear back from you on the potential of putting in more disc golf. I've seen the courses, but I haven't ever played. But, you know, having seen them, it doesn't seem like it's really a, a big lift to try to put one in, and since they are, it is popular and they're, I would like to hear where else we could put a couple of these throughout the city.
Sure, we'd be glad to look for some of them.
And just to note, they are both scheduled in both these parks.
Correct.
Right.
Be glad to.
And if they weren't, they certainly would be now.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments on these items? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen point zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several initiatives and infrastructure improvements underway in our Bond area, you heard about that earlier from Mrs. Edwards and Mr. Turnquist. Our Neighborhood and Affairs staff have been working in a collaborate, in a collaborative effort with the stakeholders and the Greater Bond Association to identify priorities to improve their community, to improve that neighborhood. And overall, the approach is a holistic approach, which involves not only engagement, but infrastructure maintenance, infrastructure improvements, and focus on safety. And there's considerable activity underway. Last week, we began a blitz in the area, and, and just a, a lot of work that's happening. So we wanted to take the opportunity to share those efforts with you, what's happening today and what's projected to happen in the future. John Baker, who's the lead of the group, is here to provide the presentation, and he's supported by his staff that's, that's doing a fantastic job in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, Mayor, I'm here to give you an update on the activities that are occurring in the Bond neighborhood. But perhaps before I do that, just want to give you just a brief little background on Neighborhood Affairs. As you know, last March, the City Manager moved seven of us into this division, and we have had the pleasure of working with this community over two hundred and twenty-two Neighborhood and Homeowners Association. We, it's, it's really a joy attending their meetings, and we are there at their meetings late in the evening on Saturday and Sunday, hooking them up with city services and working through their issues. Bond is a real special neighborhood for us, as of course, we are, our office is located in the Bond neighborhood. And the neighborhood is on the north, bounded by Famy Way. Of course, it's in the southwestern quadrant of the city, Famy Way. On the west, by Lake Bradford and Spring Hill Road, and then on the south, by Orange Avenue. East, Pasco, Wanish Way, Perry, and Railroad. Famy, of course, is to the east of this community. There are several subdivisions within this community, the Villa Mitchell, which is one that Mr. Turnquist talked about. You have the Normal School, you have the Leon Arms, all of these previously were areas that were organized with Neighborhood Association. Back in, I think, two thousand and fifteen, the neighborhood reorganized itself and was renamed the Greater Bond Neighborhood. Some demographics on the community, population a little over three thousand, average household size of two point four, average household income of seventeen, approximately seventeen Last fall, perhaps in November, the Public Safety Collective, which I'm sure you're aware of, include our Tallahassee Police Department, the Leon County Sheriff Department as well, along with all the other law enforcement agency here in town, selected Bond as the next community to implement the Public Safety Initiative. Prior to that, we were, still are in French Town and Griffin Heights as well. Public, this initiative focused on three main areas, crime prevention and education, community beautification, and of course, community empowerment and volunteerism. But prior to us getting there, oops, prior to us launching this initiative, we met with the homeowners, we met with the stakeholders here in Bond community, because there are so many issues that we need to deal with, bringing them to consensus, working with them was something that we wanted to do. And here you can see, since last November, we have had several meetings with them. One of the things that I want to point out on this slide right in the top middle, those are three pastors from the, the neighborhood. You have Pastor Montgomery, Pastor Vaughn, and Pastor Merrick, and behind them is Deacon Thomas. I point that out because they're actively involved in this process, they're actively engaged, attending meetings, making certain that members of their community are engaged, and that speaks volume for, for this initiative. Plus, with stakeholders, some that are here tonight, we've met, worked through issues to bring them on one page and to embrace the MPSI initiative that was coming to their The MPSI initiative was launched on February sixth, and attended by over one hundred neighborhood residents, well-attended event. We engaged them with city departments to allow them to know what was coming down the pike for their neighborhood that would potentially benefit their neighborhood. As you see, our, our, our police chief, the sheriff, and several of the other local law enforcement agencies, where their leaders from the church community for Bond were also in attendance. The next thing that we did in Bond was what we call Walker Block, and Commissioner Richardson, he came out, walked with us, and we really appreciate that, sir. Over a hundred and fifty residents, volunteers from the community, as well as area students came out to help us. We walked over Thirty-seventh Street, look at eleven hundred properties, the top issues- The top issues that we found out here were overgrown lawns, sidewalk repair, damaged street light, litter, dilapidated housing and structure. We next then planned a neighborhood blitz, which was a tool that we had used previously to address a neighborhood in a very concerted effort. Here you see residents, and here you see volunteers with their safety vests on, getting ready to go out in the community to assess each block. Lot of energy, lot of excitement about what's going on here. The blitz, the follow-up action was held, started rather on April 16, and the purpose of the blitz was to repair infrastructure issues. The city's actually in the neighborhood continuing these repairs that are going on. Neighbors, as Talithia said, are excited about what's happening there. They see the city truck, whether it's from the electric department or whether it's from underground utilities, they see sidewalk repairs coming on, they're giving us the thumbs up, they like what they see happening, they like the focus that's being placed on the Bond neighborhood. Here are some before and after pictures, replacing sidewalks in front of school. Bond has a community school, as you know, Bond neighborhood. Lot of the children walk to school, so having safe sidewalk is important. Underground utilities is in the process of repairing a lot of the sidewalks there. Along with what we are doing on the NPSI, the larger city government has over $30 million worth of investment either planned in and around the Bond neighborhood. Some of this figure that you see up here represent roadway improvements, stormwater improvement, water and sewer improvement. This figure that you see here also include Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the FAMU Way. Also coming, as you know, the discussion about the public safety complex being situated on the south side, I think that has tremendous benefit as well for this neighborhood as Talithia mentioned the Neighborhood First Initiative, and it's very important to engage these neighbors, to have their voices heard in the process. And so, through the Neighborhood First process, we'll be working with them on their top four neighborhood issues. They had identified these issues prior to us actively engaging with them. Public safety, community beautification, land use, and economic development. Red Turnquist and Jackie Perkins were here, they're the co-chair of this effort, and we have four target area team leaders who will be leading them through this effort. Over the next four to five months, we hope to work with them to define what is it they mean by public safety, what would, how would they like to see that issue being addressed. So, come October, November, we hope to have what we're calling their Neighborhood First Plan, that would articulate their vision for the community, as well as some of the things that they would recommend to address these four target areas. Another exciting project we have coming up in Bond is the South Side Farmers Market. This actually was started by this commission back in 2015, when you funded this South Side Initiative. I think 20,000 was allocated to start the South Side Farmers Market. Well, it had started, and we, through our assignment to the Neighborhood Affairs, we're reinvigorating this market. We have reached out to a broad cross-section of community partners to work with the neighborhood. TMH is at the table, Tallahassee Food Network, FAMU. We're all saying, how can we bring a market to the Bond neighborhood, to the south side, really, that would provide fresh and healthy food to them, and something that would be sustainable? So, to get this off the ground, we're using the funding that you had allocated back in 2015. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation had given the city a grant. There's a little left over that's been put towards it. Just recently, you accepted 5,000 from the Health Planning Group of Southwest Florida that will be used in towards this program. One of the key components of this market is a fresh food RX program. We're gonna be working with area healthcare providers who support our C patient from the 32305 zip code, the 3231 zip code, and working with them to prescribe, you know, a portion of healthy food that the residents can then come to the market and shop using a voucher that we'll provide for them. Other upcoming events that we have planned for Bond, working with them, is Neighborhood Prep. And this is a program through which we work with neighborhoods to get them ready for the storm season. We kicked that off on May 8 with a community meeting at the Walker Ford Community Center. Then we have two other meetings that are scheduled across the community. And then on May 10 is the launch of the South Side Farmers Market. Would love to have you all attending. One of the interesting fact that we have learned about Bond historically, it was a blueberry farm, and we are sort of bringing that back and promoting that as a part of the farmers market. We appreciate the opportunity to work with Bond, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Baker, and obviously ACM Barber, you all staff, and to the committee, who is clearly committed to the area, love the idea of a farmers market, additional farmers market. We've got one in Frenchtown and now in South City, which is great. I saw the list of areas of emphasis, and the only one I'd add to it, and I know we've got a couple of groups that are working on this, but I think it'll be worthy of conversation in the larger South City area, and that's the gentrification piece. More internal to the staff than probably what it is to, you know, the neighborhood in and of itself. But given what we're gonna, what we're already dealing with in the Frenchtown area, and I think what's gonna continue to grow, as the investments get made, and FAMU Way, development around there continues to take place, I don't want us to be too late sort of tuning into what I think will, we should fully expect to be concerned in that, that'll be rising house, price of housing, rising land values, and what we might be able to do about that for the area.
Yeah. On the land use section, we'll be looking into that issue, working with it, see what solutions we can bring-
Great.
-to address that.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Where is the South Side Farmers Market gonna be located?
It's gonna be located in, on the site of the Walker Ford Community Center, by the ball fields, by the tennis court there.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson, wanna thank you publicly as well, always on the front lines of these issues in the neighborhood walks. And one of the things I at least observed from the pictures is, with some rare exception, a lot of new faces. These weren't people who were walking with us when we were doing the summer walks. It appears that you all have had the ability to really, and Leanna, you as well, didn't mean to omit your name as part of staff, but you all have had the ability to really get into and activate a new part of our community, which I think is exceptional. I like seeing that in the pictures. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's important to be there and to be on the ground, because you get to see firsthand what the conditions are. You know, the disrepaired sidewalks, the abandoned homes that are a danger to the neighborhood, and you get to talk with your neighbors, to find out from them what their issues are. So, I've always enjoyed it, either doing it with Neighborhood Affairs or with Chief DeLeo and our Summer Operation Safe Neighborhoods, and encourage everyone to be a part of that. But I also wanted to recognize the work that Can has done through the leadership of Kristi Deek, and organizing neighborhoods on the south side of town, and getting them organized and involved. And Kristi Deek, thank you for the work that you've done in that regard.
You're here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maddox?
I just wanna say that Edwina Stevens is smiling down from heaven.
Who's that?
Edwina Stevens.
Oh, yes, she is. Yeah, oh, absolutely.
We started, I guess, well over 20 years ago, ended up with the Bond issue in Bond to do the infrastructure and the lagging pine infrastructure and the-
Yeah.
And she, I walked with her many a time through the Bond community, and she's smiling down and knowing that the effort continues.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for the report. Commissioners, we'll now hear a brief public safety update from Chief DeLeo. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We are pleased to report that crime continues to decline. In 2018, it's now at its lowest level in five years. The chief is at a board conference in Atlanta, and Deputy Chief Forseth is here to provide today's update, which will highlight the crime stats and their decline, the body worn camera implementation project, some significant cases in recent community engagement. He's joined by Assistant City Manager Cynthia Barber, who's been instrumental in this overall effort. Deputy Chief?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners. First off, I'll start off with our crime stats, and I'm pleased to report that for the first two months, January, February 2018, we continue to show a, that we're heading in the right direction. Violent crime is down over 16% compared to the same months for 2017. Our property crimes are down 3% for the same time period. So, overall, we're looking at a, about a 4%, 4.5% overall decrease in crime for the city of Tallahassee. To kind of put that a little bit of context, our robberies and aggravated assaults, which typically have always been on the higher end, are actually two of the categories in violent crime that are actually lower this year. We've had about 30 less incidents in the first two months compared to 2017. And then our property crime, which we know is a driver also for our violent crime, in all categories, burglary, larceny, auto theft, we're down in all categories now, over 40, 40 incidents. So, you know, back in, I think it was March, Chief DeLeo gave a report that 2017 was our lowest crime rate for the past previous five years. And so, we're optimistic that 2018, we can hopefully continue that and keep it down even lower. You know, looking back, we probably look at, that's a five-year stat, but usually we use about a three-year comparison, so maybe looking at maybe 2015 moving forward as a baseline to go off of, which is kind of, kind of in line with our strategic plan that we started in 2016 that runs through 2020. So, we'll keep you updated as we can move forward with that. Significant case summaries, some of those are included in the agenda, but I would like to highlight a couple of those. Back on March 27, we had officers that responded to a call regarding a couple males shooting a handgun at a local convenience store, which we know is typically can be very populated. Citizens who witnessed the incident provided a very good description. Officers were able to locate the vehicle, do a traffic stop, and upon that made an arrest of two individuals. Three 9mm handguns were seized in that traffic stop, and one of the handguns ended up being reported stolen to our agency on the 18th of March, just nine days prior. Another case was on March 26, again, responding to a male shooting a handgun at a vehicle leaving a complex down on the 2800 block of South Adams Street. Based upon information from witnesses, once again, officers were able to develop probable cause and make an arrest on the individual. In that case, we seized a 40 caliber handgun and over 90, over 90 grams of marijuana in that case. And then today, we sent out a press release on a kind of a high-profile case where we had a security guard that was battered at a local apartment complex while he was trying to do his job. He was attacked by three individuals, punched repeatedly, and that video went over social media, and we also put it over our social media as well to try to solicit some citizen input in trying to identify the suspects. It's still an open case, but we did make one arrest, again, due to some feedback after we put the video out on social media. So, I think the common thread between these three, that's why I highlight them, is that although we do what we can from the police department, we need the community's help. And those three cases there kind of serve as a model as how we can kind of cut those crimes down quickly, kind of preserving some man-hours time, and, you know, resolve those for those individuals that are victimizing our community. Body worn cameras, just to touch on that, we've sent a press release about two weeks ago that we're doing a trial and evaluation on the Axon Flex 2 camera. We have about six individuals at this point that are doing that evaluation. The Flex 2 camera is a, kind of a shoulder mount, and we're kind of looking at just telling them to put it through the paces at this point, and they're doing a good job. We wanna wear it on our uniform, we wanna wear it on raincoats, we wanna wear it on winter coats, we gotta make sure that the officers can run with it. You know, they're all on the ground, they're running through woods, they're trying to do whatever they can to make sure that camera is gonna be, fit our knees and be stable and be able to capture what we needed to capture, when we needed to capture. So, that trial and evaluation is continued probably to about the end of May. So, we have about another 30 to 45 days before that evaluation concludes, or we can do an assessment and then figure out if this is the right camera, or we need to kind of look on from that point there. And the last thing I want to touch on is just our community engagement. As noted in the agenda, we have multiple things that we try to engage in the community from, you know, Citizen Police Academy, job fairs, Neighborhood Association meetings. But one of the ones I wanna highlight is, last Friday, we had the opportunity to go out to Harlem Street, where Habitat for Humanity is building a house for a resident here and his family. And we had about 18 Tallahassee employees, both sworn and non-s sworn, show up and basically work from, you know, 7:45 in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. And, you know, when we got there, there were some exterior walls, and by the end of day, we had windows cut out, interior walls set, everything is ready to go for trusses at that point. So, just a small sample of the things that we try to do to keep that community partnership strengthened and keep going. You heard from the Bond community tonight, the progress down there. One gentleman said that, you know, this is a fifth-year incident that's been going on, and it's a continued effort. It's not something that we can change in one month, but we're optimistic that we can make progress and will continue to do so. I'm here for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Chief, and again, a big heartfelt thank you to you and ACM Barber, to you all's entire team, and obviously to our command staff and line officers for the work that you all are doing, obviously through the execution of your own job. The proof is in the eating. The numbers are obviously going in the right direction. You all are taking a lot of the right steps. I think I'm most impressed by the fact that it's not just arresting, but there is a total community approach that's being taken here, and it's evident in the fact that you're making really good, strong progress.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to take the opportunity, of course, to thank the collective, because without their partnership, I'm sure we couldn't have been as successful as we've been, as quickly as we have been at this point. So, all of those partners that are a part of the collective, I wanna thank them too.
Absolutely.
But I also wanna ask, have you all done a similar presentation for the county commissioners? And the reason I ask, I was at a meeting with the county commissioner recently, and that person mentioned our crime stats as a possible deterrent to businesses coming to this community when we try to recruit businesses. And obviously, at least for that person, they had not heard this presentation. So, I'm wondering if the entire county commission has, if they've heard this same presentation and understand where we are in addressing our crime issue at this point?
Yeah, I don't believe the county commission has heard the most recent stats for January, February 2018. Those relatively new that we got in, because as you know, we're still working with the PRI management, the auditor, and so we're making sure on a month-to-month basis throughout 2018 that that person is doing the objective review of our stats to make sure they're accurate. So, I don't believe they've seen those numbers.
Okay. Is it possible that you all maybe could get with the county administrator and see if you can schedule a time to present them with the same information, so we're all on the same page in that regard?
Yes, sir, we will. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Richardson, for that suggestion, because I've suggested that on other topics too, and it's important.
Yeah.
I mean, considering one of them wants to be the mayor, it's very important and, you know, that we share information across the aisle, so to speak. I had, first of all, I wanted to really commend you and follow up with one of our speakers who talked about how important the engagement was to the residents, and that it's encouraging to them, and they're enthusiastic about it. And I noticed that you had 43 engagements with the public here. You've been really busy. That's more than 30 days. That's-
Yes, ma'am.
-more than one a day. And so, I really appreciate that, because obviously it's important to the residents that you have these encounters with them. You know, I have one question. You have confiscated 10 firearms, and two of those were reported as stolen. Well, the rest, were they registered to the offenders, or?
It's hard to tell. You can't check the ownership by name through- You can't check the ownership by name through a database. So a lot of times, because they're arrested, we seize those firearms and impound them. And sometimes they may have a lawful purpose to come back and reclaim those firearms, provided they're not a convicted felon. If they are a convicted felon, then we will keep it impounded and, you know, at some point probably have that firearm destroyed.
Well, I think that it's important to know. I mean, it would give us an idea. I mean, if 80% of the guns that were confiscated are unregistered or, you know, no trace to the owner, that would be important, a piece of information, I would think.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy chief. We're actually going to take item 13.06 before we take a brief break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Economic vitality is a priority that you've established, and the state of development trends is one measure that allows us to evaluate the economic strength of our community. And so far in 2018, commercial and residential development activity is very strong. Karen Jumminville, our director of growth management, is here to share those trends with you and give you an overall update in terms of our permitting activity.
Good evening, commissioners. Happy to be here to give a brief update on permitting activity and to give a feel for some of the trends that we're experiencing. As the city manager mentioned, we monitor development trends as a way to gauge the impact that construction and development have on our economy over time. And in addition to monitoring the volume of applications that we receive, we also look at efficiency measures, such as our own performance measures, to make sure that our reviews are being conducted in a timely manner. So I have a lot of good news to report tonight from the standpoint of permitting activity. Just starting here with commercial activity, this chart shows the total amount of commercial square footage that's been permitted by fiscal year, starting from the left to the right for full fiscal years 15 through 17. And then the right column shows FY 18 to date. And the reason that I showed that is to show that market increase that in FY 17, or FY 18, we're already over the total permitting activity for commercial that we had in FY 17. So we've been very busy, had steady increases in a lot of projects in that regard. Another interesting
I'm sorry, Karen, just a real quick question. Do these include existing infrastructure that might be being retrofit, or is this all new construction?
No, this is actually new. The purple color is new construction, the red is additions, and the green is alterations.
Yep, it's a, reading's fundamental, sorry.
No, I should have pointed that out. And on that same note, you can see that the new construction in the purple, there's been a 67% increase in the amount of new commercial when you look at the full year fiscal 17 to 18. So lots of increases. The next chart, this shows where we are to date in fiscal years 18 on the right compared to on the left, the fiscal year same time period, the first two quarters of fiscal year 17. And as you can see, we're up about 50% from the same time in the first two quarters of last year. The next slide shows the number of building inspections performed. You can see 15 to 16 fiscal years, we stayed relatively steady. We jumped about 10% in fiscal year 17. And then the far column on the right shows that year-to-date in 18, we're already at 66% of where we were for the last full fiscal year in terms of inspections. Again, comparing the first two quarters of fiscal year 17 to 18, we've seen a 37% increase in the number of inspections so far this year. New residential development, we've also seen market increases, especially in the area of multifamily. The darker color is the new one and two family permits, and the lighter color is multifamily development. You can see for multifamily, we had a 9% increase from fiscal years 15 to 16. And then we jumped to a 91% increase in multifamily from fiscal year 16 to 17. So we had a huge jump in that area. And as you can see on the far right, fiscal year 18 to date, we're already over here at 87% of the total number that we permitted last fiscal year, which was the 91% jump. So we've been very, very busy in that area. It remains very strong in our local economy. With regard to the new one and two family, we had a 23% increase between FY 16 and 17. And for this year to date, we're already at 219 applications for this first two quarters compared to 381 for the last full fiscal year. So what that shows is we're already at 57% of the workload that we did in this area of one and two family for the last full fiscal year. Again, comparing the first two quarters of fiscal year 17 and 18, we've experienced 164% increase in multifamily units permitted. Single family is about the same as last year, slightly up, up just slightly. I know there's a lot on this slide, but it's always interesting to compare how we're doing compared to other communities. And what this slide shows is data from the National Association of Home Builders, and it shows the, from fiscal year 17 to 18, and it shows the change in residential permits, both the single family and multifamily. The single family is in the purple, the multifamily is in the red. And it shows comparisons with other Florida cities, the southeast, the US overall, and then just the general south. For the national data, what this shows is the change from 2017 to 2018 in residential building permits. It looks like Florida, Florida's typically above the rest of the US in terms of single family growth, at about 14% compared to the US, which is up about 11% in that area. Tallahassee comes in about 12%, so just above the US average and a little under the state average. And then what's especially interesting here is for multifamily, Florida as a state is significantly higher than the US. The US is about 6% increase in this time period. Florida's at 22%, and Tallahassee comes in at 225%.
Wow.
So you can see that, the big spike there. I don't want to overstate the data here, because it's only for, they were reporting a several-month period in 17 compared to a several-month period in 18. But I did think it was interesting and it was telling to see how we compare to the state, the nation, and even some other college towns. The chart shows Tuscaloosa, Auburn, and Athens. And interestingly enough, for college towns, they were showing significant decreases in their multifamily. So again, just an interesting point of comparison. Environmental permits, site plans, and subdivisions combined are, these types of reviews were down slightly between, from 15 to 16, and then they went up just a little bit up in 17. To date now, we're a little less than half of the total of what we did last year. So we're about 46% for the first two quarters of this year compared to what we did last year. For these same types of applications, when comparing the first two quarters of 17 compared to the first two quarters of 18, overall, we're up roughly with both types of applications by about 7%. And these are interesting measures to follow, but it's not a one-to-one relationship, so not every building permit that comes in has a site plan or environmental permit. So even some of the smaller, you know, decreases or less big increases are not as telling. We have a lot of other commercial projects that come in that get permits that don't get these types of reviews. The next slide shows, this is an efficiency measure, showing the performance on our residential guarantee program. As you may remember, the commission adopted a program back around 2012 that required us to review new one and two family permits within seven days for a new application, five days for a resubmital, or we have to give the money back. And as you can see, we continue to not only meet the timeframes that were established in the program, but we're doing better than what that program stipulated. And the numbers that you see here show fiscal years, full fiscal years 15 through 17, and then fiscal year 18 to date. So we have ranged really from a low of 4.39 days to a high of 5.35. Right now, we're about 4.79 days, and that's the average for all applications, new and Just to summarize some of the development trends that we're seeing, some of the older projects we're seeing, you see this around town when you drive around, are being replaced with newer projects that are higher density, more intense developments. We've seen increases in commercial multifamily, single family developments, inspections. Like I pointed out, the increases in multifamily are significantly higher here in Tallahassee than the US, the state, and other peer cities. Looking at the first two quarters, things look very positive. We've shown increases over the same time period in fiscal year 17 in total commercial, residential, our combined land use permits, site plans, environmental permits, inspections as well. Another trend is the urban area is a very hot area for development. We continue to not only see new projects and applications come in, but we get a lot of inquiries informally about future projects that will be in the pipeline soon. We're continuing in permitting to focus on customer service and making sure that our reviews are efficient and effective. Like I pointed out, with the residential guarantee timeframes, that's something that's very important and a priority for us. We continue on the effectiveness side to partner with our other city departments to make sure the development review process is as smooth as possible, goes as smoothly as possible for our customers. So this isn't just an increase in workload for growth management. We work with our underground utilities department, electric, our planning department, design works, and all work together to try to create some better outcomes for development review. As the workload increases, we're continuing to monitor the staffing levels. Back during the economic downturn, we heard from the commission and city manager that when things got busy, we needed more staff to come and ask. We've done that over the last few years and gained several additional positions as we've seen the uptick in workload. So we're continuing to monitor that. Right now, we're doing fine, we're managing to keep up with it, but this is something that we monitor closely, and if we see that there's a need for additional staffing resources, we will come back.
Great.
So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you, Karen, and to your entire department for leading, I think, a really progressive and robust department. We know from national data that Tallahassee is one of the fastest-growing economies and the fastest-growing in the state of Florida per capita. And I think we just saw one reason why the development trends in the city are keeping a lot of people working, frankly, at all levels of the income ladder. So thank you for that, and do please keep us posted on the staffing piece of this, because I imagine as these projects continue to come in, the demand on staff time will only continue to stay high, if not get higher. Commissioner Richardson followed by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what this suggests is that Tallahassee is the place to be for those of us who live here, who want to stay here, and we're about to get, I think, where we need to be in terms of being able to keep some of our graduates here with respect to some of the development that's happening. But I'm really encouraged by what we see and what that portends for the future of our community as we grow responsibly, acknowledging development and encouraging that, but at the same time balancing that with preserving our traditional neighborhoods and the green space that's important to us. The question that I would have, Karen, is are we getting lots of inquiries from outside companies that want to locate to our community for commercial development? Are you seeing that, or is it mostly local businesses expanding?
I'd say it's a combination. We're really seeing everything, and I think the chart showed that, that there's a huge increase in new commercial development that we're seeing, but we're also seeing a lot in terms of alterations to existing businesses and then expansions to existing.
Yeah, so despite what you might hear or read, there is still lots of interest from outside of the community in?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We have pre-submital meetings every Thursday, and we're constantly hearing from new people who want to come in and do new development projects in Tallahassee who are not from here.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of course, Commissioner Miller.
Well, thank you for asking that question, Commissioner Richardson. Karen, this is really fascinating report, and I guess every time you come in front of us with this report, I ask you the same question that I'm going to ask it now. I know that your staffing levels have increased proportionally to the work, but how many vacancies do you have? And in addition, I just found out yesterday that Steve Palmer had left. So who do you have that is reviewing the types of work that he previously did?
Keith Burnset actually is our new division head of a newly merged division. Steve Palmer was over our land use and environmental team, but we now have a combined team of land use and environmental and code enforcement. We have moved our code enforcement officers, who have always been separate on a separate team, and now they're on geographically based teams. So it is a much better arrangement and much more efficient. They're much more integrated in with the rest of the development review process and inspection process. So Keith did replace Steve in that role. In terms of vacancies, we have had numerous over the last six months or so. We've hired a new engineer who's doing a wonderful job, hired her from, over from County Growth Management, so she's hit the ground running. In terms of building, we still have one vacancy, one main vacancy. We also have another couple administrative vacancies, but in terms of plan review and something that's very important for getting permits out, we have a vacant plans examiner position that we're still actively seeking to fill. So we have a number of vacancies, but we're working hard to get them filled and haven't been missing deadlines because of those.
All right, thank you.
Great. Karen, again, thank you. We're going to be in a 10-minute break, and we convene as the public hearing. All this meeting back to order, and we will commence with the public hearings, beginning with item 15.01, city attorney.
Item 15.01 is the second and final public hearing on ordinance number 18-Z-05, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end university transition on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflict and separability and providing for an effective date.
Are there any public speakers?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker forms for item 1501. I'm just taking a quick look to make sure there's not anyone I have missed, and there appears to be none, so no speakers.
All right, commissioners, we are on the second and final. Is there a motion?
A motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve, staff recommendation. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes 4 to 0. Item 15.02, city attorney.
Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 18-Z-10AA, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, meaning the Ox Bottom Meadows Plan Unit Development Concept Plan on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Are there any public speakers?
Mayor, we do have speakers on this item. On 1502, we have Terry Cleland. She'll be followed by Allen Wise. As with our earlier portion of our meeting, speakers will have three minutes for your remarks. There's a timer right there in the front of you, but on the other side of the microphone here, you'll see a light, it'll
Okay.
It'll be red or green, and it'll turn red on this. We've raised our podium, you may not be able to see it as well, but
I see something that looks
Just our side of the microphone is on the stand there.
Hopefully, I won't take three minutes. Oh, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Terry Cleland, and I live at 5624 Burnside Circle in northeast Tallahassee. And I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposal that you're considering tonight. I provided input, which is included in the record for this meeting, as well as this particular input tonight, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. My views are shared by a lot of my neighbors, and they could not be here tonight. My views are shared by a lot of my neighbors, and they could not be here tonight. This is really hard to sit down here and provide input in this format, so I do speak for them. And I speak for them when I say that I was thrilled that the Planning and Zoning Commission denied the rezoning, and I'm chagrined that the planning department is recommending that you reverse their decision. Please stand with your commission and also deny this rezoning request. There are a lot of maps and facts presented in a confusing jumble of documents regarding this rezoning, and the change, documents for the changes were not on the agenda on Monday when I wrote this statement. But the decision basically comes down to this. They're asking you to change the zoning so they can fill in a pond and mow down a natural setting of trees along Thomasville Road to build yet another strip mall that we don't need. How desperate is this city to develop more commercial space? Is it worth giving up one of the last natural wetlands, one of the last refuges of wildlife in the area, to put in another mattress store? Please say no to this rezoning, or impose conditions to retain more wetlands, more natural areas for humans and animals, and less commercialism and traffic. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Allen Wise, and he is the only other speaker I have for the item.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Allen Wise. I work for Greenman Peterson, 1590 Village Square Boulevard. I appreciate the comments made by the first speaker, and wanted to point out that before we even set out to rezone, we undertook a fairly extensive environmental review of the property. The wetlands we found were to be an old roadside ditch of Thomasville Road in terrible environmental condition. The pond is a man-made, old farm pond. We've been through enough study with both our consultants and also with growth management biologists to realize that it's not going to be very difficult to raise the, enhance the environmental features on site to really provide a regional environmental and water quality benefit in this area. If I could boil the project down, we're basically bringing a commercial area where we believe it kind of belongs. It's on a six-lane arterial and walking distance from at least 400 dwelling units. There's no adjacency issues. It's between an arterial and other commercial. As I mentioned, the environmental impacts can be mitigated and be mitigated on-site, so it's not like our plan is to just write a check to the state mitigation bank that's going to enhance something in another county. Lastly, we agree with all of the conditions that staff have put on it. We've worked closely with staff through this process, through the staff review, through the DRC meeting, through the planning commission meeting, and then before this hearing tonight. So I'm available if you have any questions. I am the applicant's agent, and with that, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, if we could just hear real quickly from the staff on what the planning commission's thoughts were, and then the staff's, if there's a way to summarize that.
Yes, sir. Susan Poplin will share that information.
Are those all the speakers?
Yes, they are.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so short. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just a quick overview of the project and what we found as staff. As you know, this is a proposal for a PUD, an existing PUD amendment. You've heard a little bit about it. Just a quick comparison, the major change to the PUD is the open space area along Thomasville Road in this green area is being converted to a commercial component also along Thomasville Road. The net reduction in the open space area is about 1.45 acres. This is less than 5% of the total project and about 11 or 12% of the total open space. So not a terribly significant change with regard to that. The commercial component itself would be revised from, the original proposal was to revise it from 8,600 square feet to 108,600 square feet. To address some of the concerns raised by the planning commission with regard to the village center, the applicant has voluntarily reduced that amount to 96,875 square feet, which is within the village center standards for commercial development. This is just an aerial to give you an idea of the project along Thomasville Road. As you can see, it's bounded by two other PUDs, Ox Bottom Crest, which is being developed at this point with residential uses, single-family, Ox Bottom Terrace, which has not been developed yet, and our project, the Ox Bottom Meadows PUD, which currently has a number of things that are on the ground and/or under construction. This gives you an idea of what's on the ground and under construction. We have Red Hills Village, which very much reflects the intended use for independent living and assisted living, Azalea Gardens, which is a memory care center, and a veterinary clinic, which is under construction at this point. The Oxford Commons, which folks up there are fairly familiar with, includes a commercial development and a center that is one of those mattress stores, a barbecue, a restaurant, a dental office, and one open vacant storefront. Just giving you an idea again of the project. Okay. This is a chart from the PUD that describes the development standards. Again, you can see the changes to the single-family residential area and to the office commercial section. Again, the largest being the commercial bump up, and this reflects the change that the applicant has agreed to, which is to reduce the amount of commercial development on that particular component. The planning commission items that they identified included housing having a variety and a density. We looked at that. We reanalyzed it based on the planning commission's concern about village center. They are within the density range for the village center, and it does include single-family and independent living, which would provide a variety of housing type. Not a wide variety, but a variety. Commercial intensity, they did revise the commercial intensity to meet the village center standards. Again, that means a reduction in the commercial square footage. And then with regard to site impacts, which I discussed, the 1.45 acres in open space, which is a relatively small change to the project. Additionally, you heard the developer or you heard the applicant's agent indicate that they will address mitigation and provide that on-site. These items are covered in all the conditions that are listed in the ordinance. And I will turn it over to Wayne Tetter to talk to you a little bit about the proposed realignment of Veldedary.
Commissioners, during a recent discussion with a development just north of this, what we heard from the residents in and around that area was the congestion and the conflicts of traffic at the intersection of Carey Forest and Thomasville Road. During that discussion with that development project, an idea was floated out to do some work to tie into some access further down to Veldedary Road in this area. When we started looking at the bigger picture, rather than just focusing in on this individual site, we saw a huge opportunity, and it was reflected in the DRC staff's recommendations as a preferred option for the developer to build this realigned development roadway to Veldedary, to Veldedary roadway. As it moved through the DRC process, as it moved through the planning commission process, what we didn't want to occur was that after this development is done, we've lost ability to make a substantial improvement on the intersection of Carey Forest and Thomasville Road, as well as enhancing some access for Veldedary Road and Ox Bottom Road. So as a result of that, you'll see in your agenda items, staff is now recommending that you require the development to align Ox Bottom Road to Veldedary Road. It doesn't require him to do certain improvements at the median here. That's something that we're going to have to work with DOT and Leon County to address how the circulation moves in there. I can tell you that your traffic engineering staff and I have been to District 3 at FDOT. They received this idea very positively. So what it will require is that staff would have to move forward with formal applications with DOT to have this roadway realigned. In addition to that, you notice there may be some impacts to some wetland features up in this area. We recognize that, and we're also recommending that if that does happen, as we move through the final layout of that process or roadway, that we will have to come back before you with a linear infrastructure variance to make sure that happens. So the city would have to be the applicant for that component. So that, I'm going to turn it back to Susan to kind of close out the recommendations in the agenda.
Yes, and just to bring it home with the conditions, and as I was sitting there, I was reminded that I did want to just correct one thing. The reduction in the commercial is from what the applicant originally proposed in the application for the amendment. In reality, it is an overall increase in commercial on that particular, in that particular project. So just to clarify that, I don't want you to feel like I didn't cover that accurately. With regard to the, with regard to the conditions, of course, you heard about the reduction a couple times from the original application. It still is an addition of commercial overall. They are revising, or the condition to revise the project description to list the density at the village center density, which is 16 units acre, to revise that traffic circulation map. All important if we're going to get that alignment for the roadway. And then the original circulation plan included four access points on Thomasville Road. We've asked the applicant to eliminate some of those access points based on FDOT spacing standards, and of course, with the realignment, that'll also be a significant consideration as they move forward with this project. For the conservation, there is a portion, if I might go back. There is a small portion that is going to remain in conservation and open space, but it does not yet have an easement over there. We're requesting that the applicant address having an easement over that particular piece of property, which would be carried out at the final development plan, site plan stage, and then identifying as part of the concept plan, the pedestrian and bicycle trails within the project because they have so altered now the open space and conservation areas. Now we really need to see where they're going to make those pedestrian connections, where they're going to have bike facilities and pedestrian facilities within the project, connecting to outer points of the project, and also connecting to additional open space areas within these other PUDs that are adjacent. Both Ox Bottom Crest and Terrace have open space areas that butt right up to this. We're asking them to do that and to provide it as an amenity to the project, amenitizing it so that people will be interested in using it. And there are quite a few people out there that are using the existing trails and sidewalks. So we think this would be a great addition and something that if he does it as part of the concept plan, we'll see it carry forward in the site plan when it comes to, when it comes to the point of review. And then you heard about the mitigation on-site, so getting that completely on-site would be a benefit to having, to having the impacts or recognizing the impacts being mitigated as part of the project. And then finally, along Thomasville Road, we want to make sure that we keep some of that greenery that we see as we, as we're driving along. We are asking them to put in our highest buffer, a type D buffer of minimum of 35 feet. And again, that's a minimum, so they could do more, to protect some of those, or to keep some of that vegetation greenery as you're driving down Thomasville Road. So with those conditions that we have, that staff has recommended, the added conditions based on meeting the village center standards, and another condition for the Veldedary-Ox Bottom Road realignment, staff would recommend, recommend option one to adopt the ordinance and amend the Ox Bottom PUD with the conditions that we have proposed at this point.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Miller. And there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Miller.
Well, I have a number of questions, and it really can be made very simple. This is going to be a great, I think our speaker sized it up nicely. She said we're filling basically the conservation and the wetland in order to build a commercial center. So given that, I, my support depends completely on two things. The first one is that this, a condition of approval requires the realignment of Ox Bottom with Veldedary, and secondarily, that Section M on the PUD is changed in the way that the DRC requested that it be changed, because in our copy, it isn't changed. And that's one of your, when you have other conditions, there's a number of conditions, and as the speaker mentioned, there is a volume of information. But the bottom line is that we have to require adherence to our stormwater standards. And I, one of the things that I noticed on the map is that they, there's this little, if you'll pull up one of your maps, there's this little slot up at the top, which is basically a, which is basically a little overflow. You can probably read that better than I can, existing drainage easement essentially that just empties right out into where this commercial is about to go. So I don't know how that is going to be worked out. I mean, that's emptying right into there right now. When it empties into this pond, the pond goes underneath the highway through a culvert, and it feeds a creek on the other side that runs along Veldedary, and then it goes on down the way into Kinseal, Lake Kinseal. And when that pond overflows, that all happens. I mean, water flows through the culvert and down the way, and yet, we're going to be, we're talking about filling that, not only the part of the pond itself, but filling the outlet also. So I don't know how you're going to plan to reconfigure that with your new pond and have it go into that culvert and pop off over the way it does now. And so I really would like to hear from your stormwater engineer, if it's possible.
While that's coming forward, could I add one thing?
Sure.
My memory of that pond was that Mr. Boynton dug it.
Correct.
That it wasn't a natural wetlands feature at all, that Mr. Boynton dug that, when I remember going back 20 years.
That is correct, and we submitted all of that information as part of our EIA application to growth management. Currently, Ms. Miller, the drainage that comes out of Bull Run actually goes around this pond whenever they...
It's directly adjacent. If you look at, if you look at this map, there's an arrow up in the north, the northeastern corner of that map, well, it was easier to see on the graphic.
Well, so what you're talking about...
See what I'm talking about?
That's a DOT drainage easement, and that is, there's actually a pipe that comes out of the DOT pond. We can, we can move that and adjust that as necessary.
Yeah, but where does it go? It goes on to...
So let me, let me explain. Currently, the drainage from Bull Run comes out, and it does not get into this lake. Whenever they dug it...
That's not the source of my question.
Okay.
My question at this point purely is all about this drainage easement over here that's currently emptying right on to this, this commercial property.
There is a separate ditch that runs around the pond that is not tied to the pond, that runs alongside Thomasville Road. The pond and that ditch are not interconnected.
I'm not interested in the pond right now. I do, let's just go, let's just jump ahead. I accept the fact that this is a man-made pond and all of that. My concern is with the volume and where you're going to put the water that is, in fact, in the pond, no matter who created it, because it's full all the time, and it overflows. So I want to know, and it overflows in a place where we're talking here about filling and building Veldedary on top of it essentially to connect to Ox Bottom. But what's going to happen to the water in the pond? What's going to happen to this water that's coming on to your property from above? And how is this going to be connected to the same way that it does now to go underneath the road? And how are you going to keep that volume from being more than it is now? the road? And how are you going to keep that volume from being more than it is now?
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Gazveny, 4708 Capital Circle Northwest. The box cover gets extended. So ultimately, it would be touching that basin or the pond that is there. So it would not be covered up, nor it gets eliminated. It'd just get extended out under, you know, whether it's the road or the parking lot or whatever is the future.
Right.
But it would get extended. As, I don't know if that would answer your question, ma'am, or not. We are also, your comments about the conditions, we're in agreement with that. We have discussed that with the staff. Be glad to answer any more questions. I don't know if I got your question right or wrong.
All right. So you're going to, so you're going to promise me that you're going to, your plan is to adhere to our stormwater regulations without, I've, I have to say, I've seen this property more times than you can imagine. And even starting with the planning commission, because I was on the planning commission whenever Mr. Boynton came in to get the change to build a bank there. And then he filled that big chunk of property down in the southeastern corner. And then it's come back, and it's come back, and it's come back. So, so we're just going to go ahead and we're going to find out what the rules are from staff. We're going to figure out how to do it. And everything's going to be hunky dory, and you're not going to need any variances or any of that type of thing, right?
We don't need any variances. It may be a variance needed because of the construction of some of the road, just a small-
I understand.
But we're absolutely going to adhere to the stormwater rules.
Okay.
And not that we would like to, but we also do not have any other option to adhere to. So we will.
Right.
We have worked with staff for probably close to a year and a half now, and really put our, our desire to construct on hold so we can come up with something that would benefit the public, especially transportation, where the Veldedary Road can be realigned.
Right.
County is very desirous of this issue also. But absolutely, we would adhere to all of the regulations. And any feelings would get compensated. We would, we would be providing additional volume to mitigate. Also, all the, even the ditch side, which is of a low quality wetlands, would get replaced with more enhanced and higher quality of wetlands.
All right. Thank you. The, as far as the county being desirous of this change, I, it's my understanding that DOT is also desirous of the change because the question came up in my realm, related to a discussion of Cary Forest Parkway earlier on the Transportation Planning Agency, because that is such an overloaded intersection racing toward failure. And so something has to be done. And there's really not much out there to do except this. That's one way to mitigate some of that heavy, heavy load that occurs in the morning over there. So that's really important because once this goes forward, if that's not done at this stage, it will never, that takes away the possibility of doing it. So I'm happy that you all seem to be in agreement with the staff. I'm not real clear on who's going to build the road. Would you like to fill me in on that?
I think that's us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gazveny. All right. And you're good with the buffer, 35-foot buffer on the side of Thomasville and all, and the pedestrian walkway? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all for the presentation and the questions. There is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners, we are now back up to, excuse me, our regular agenda item, and I believe we left off on 13.04.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, we've all been anxious to improve the user experience for our downtown parking program. And staff has been evaluating numerous solutions that are available today, and sought stakeholder feedback from the, the users and the immediate merchants in that area. We've got a presentation for you this evening. Judy Donahoe, our real estate director, is here to provide an overview of, of our recommendations and seek your approval to issue RFPs for new solutions, not only for our own street parking, but for our garage parking as well, and also adopt a companion resolution that would change our fee structure to support these upgrades and enhance the user experience.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. City Manager, mayors and, mayor and commissioners. This presentation will summarize our continuing efforts to improve the Tallahassee parking experience by updating our equipment and technology and provide the opportunity to share our resources with our public partners. This diagram depicts how parking impacts nearly all aspects of life in Tallahassee, including the city commission priorities of quality of life, economic development, infrastructure, and public safety. Additionally, parking impacts community priorities of citizen mobility, sense of place, and a thriving business environment. Where are we today? The picture you see is an illustrated metaphor of our curtain, current parking system and includes antiquated equipment with no credit card or pay by app capabilities, lack of user convenience with no reservations, validations, or occupancy information. Additionally, there is no compatibility with other parking systems. And there's also the lack of parking space turnover. And parking space availability is a known predictor of business success. In July of 2016, the city entered into a three-year pilot agreement with CT District Parking for the lease of 60 parking spaces on Madison Street. The pilot was created to collect parking data the city could use in solving our own parking issues. At the midpoint of the project, what have we learned? Well, we've learned that credit cards are rated as the preferred method of payment, accounting for 62% of all transactions. Cash is still popular at 24. And somewhat surprisingly, the pay by app usage has remained constant at 14%. It'll be interesting to see how that changes over the next 18 months of the pilot. I'm going to take you on a virtual tour of downtown parking today. This view is of the Claimant Garage. As you can see from the picture shown, the parking equipment is antiquated, and the parts are no longer manufactured. I was recently told that they are a candidate for the Parking Smithsonian Museum. Customers complain about the long wait to exit the garage and not being able to pay by credit card or app upon exit. After our visit to Claimant Garage, we decided to visit the downtown merchants. We spend some time circling the Monroe Street corridor looking for available parking. Luck is with us, we find a space. Another piece of luck gives us two quarters to pay for an hour of time to eat or shop. Tallahassee currently has 1,146 on-street parking meters, and all of the meters in our production are coin-only and are decades, decades-old design. We hope to offer the citizens and customers of Tallahassee modern equipment with leading-edge technology to make their parking experience seamless with, with their downtown visit. Back to the virtual tour. This is a modern garage of tomorrow with new upgraded equipment. We hope to install equipment similar to this in the Claimant and Eastside garages. Parkers can pay by credit card or by app. Prepaid cards will allow seamless entry and exit, as well as vendor validations of parking. Please note the occupancy information on the real-time display. The new technology will make the parking experience faster and Our garages of the future will also have electric, excuse me, will have charging stations for electric vehicles. Our technology of tomorrow offers a virtual parking experience in the future with convenient payment methods and, and parking time management. Integration of the app will give merchants an option to validate or provide discount parking to customers. Just as we wanted to enjoy Monroe Street's restaurants and shopping with the old on-street equipment, in our world of tomorrow, we want to enjoy the same amenities. Happily, our new smart meters will allow us to pay by credit card, pay by app, and also provide occupancy information. Less time searching for a vacant spot and less time digging between the seats for loose change, although that still will be an option. Tomorrow's parking app, the new meters will be integrated with app-based smartphone technology. You can find parking, pay for parking, add time to parking, and receive alerts when your paid parking time is nearing expiration. The reality is that Tallahassee is not where we want to be with parking. We want to provide customers with the ultimate parking experience and have a parking program that supports downtown destinations. We know with the right resources, we can and we will do a better job. So what will it take? It will take modernized infrastructure at both garages and update the parking equipment. We need updated equipment on, on-street parking. We need technology integration, allowing credit card and pay by app transactions. We need real-time parking occupancy at the touch of your smartphone. And research has consistently shown the correlation between success or failure of a business and parking turnover. And we, and we asked the commission this evening to support a rate increase to help fund for these enhancements. City staff reached out to the downtown businesses, the Claimant Plaza tenants, and the owners and others in the community to discuss parking rate increases. We were sensitive to parking demands and affordability. Rates are proposed to increase for just the 230 downtown metered spaces and for the garages during the business day and some monthly parking rates. The rates are not changing for Saturdays, Sundays, and evenings in the garage, and will remain free for on-street during the weekend and evenings. This slide depicts Tallahassee's rates compared to other cities nationwide. As you can see, Tallahassee is at the lower end of the, of the rate spectrum. Our last rate increase was in October of 2009, when we went from 25 cents to 50 cents an hour. As of July 2017, the average cost of parking in the United States for two hours is $4. So where do we go from here? Now that you've seen some of the enhancements that can be made, how do we achieve them? A recommendation and the request to the commission this evening is for the following. Option one, do authorize staff to seek proposals for new parking equipment and technology, and adopt Resolution 18R06, increasing public parking rates with an effective date of October 1, 2018. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Judy. Are there any questions, Commissioners, or is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept staff's or option one.
There's a motion and a second.
All right. My question is, give us the money trail for me, if you would. Is this $600,000 the upgrade for the entire 1,000 meters or an upgrade? What exactly will that pay for?
Certainly. It's the upgrade for the 230 downtown meters. It's to pay for an app, to integrate the technology. It is to, to pay for the occupancy, occupancy systems in the garage. And it will, I'm skipping one thing.
Oh, the upgrade in the garage. You haven't-
No, the upgrade in the garage was in the consent item that was approved during the consent portion.
Okay, all right.
Have we considered a vendor doing this? Or are we the owner, operator, installer, software? Is that all of us? Or are we using a vendor for those purposes?
Well, we have kind of an interesting arrangement right now, Mayor. The garages, we have a contracted operator, vendor, and the on-street is managed by, by city staff. The RFPs would of course be going out to, to find vendors that could provide the on-street parking for us, but we would still be the managers.
Got it. Commissioner Miller.
On his point, so you're saying that the contractor in the parking garage is going to install or-
No, I, I apologize for the confusion. Right now, we have a parking garage manager, and they manage the day-to-day operations. But we would be issuing the RFP, and the vendor of, of the parking equipment would be the installer, although it would be managed and run by Republic Parking Systems.
Thank you, that's clear.
Great. Well, we need updated parking, that's for sure.
Yes, sir.
And on the pricing piece, because I know there are folks who are sensitive to that, you just have to go down the road to another city and see what folks are paying for parking. We are more than a budget here when it comes to the cost of, of, of our parking. I certainly didn't expect by going from a quarter to 50 cents that we were going to be doing really anything to put a dent, either as a deterrent for people parking all day. And by the way, earlier, the comments that were made around the folks who just sort of go back and feed the meter in spite of the limitations. Hopefully, this addresses that in some way. The technology would address the, sort of the feeding of the meter in spite of those limitations. Judy?
Yes, absolutely. That's the intent.
Got it. Because it's not a deterrent at all. 50 cents, and you just come back out and you do the same thing again for an hour or so. Glad to see us moving in this direction and look forward to the finished product. Commissioners, is a motion and a second? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes three to zero. Commissioners, we're now on to item 13.05. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Over the last several months, staff has worked hand-in-hand with the Canopy developer to craft a model to implement inclusionary housing in the popular Eastside neighborhood. Michael Parker and Lou Norvell have worked diligently with this. I'd like to thank them. I'd like to thank the developer because this is the first test of the large neighborhood as it relates to the ordinance. So there were some hurdles to overcome. There were some problems to solve. And I feel very good that they were able to do that in a cooperative way. I'm not sure each meeting ended with happy parties. And so that's probably a good indication of, of success. But we are here today, and I'd like to ask Michael Parker to provide us an overview.
Thank you. As the city manager indicated, this is really a significant action on the part of the city. Back in 2008, the city adopted some substantial modifications to the ordinance on inclusionary housing. Excuse me. And this is going to be the first time that that, those terms in that ordinance have, have been put into play by, through a project. So we did plow a lot of new ground in this agreement. While the ordinance laid out some specific principles that we were to follow, the actual putting them into a workable document is what you see today. I do want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation on behalf of the city to the developer and his team for this. We did have some rather intense negotiating sessions during this, but I will tell you that we all adhered to a principle at the very beginning that these houses are, these units that were going to be, be built, would be compatible and would not be discernible from the rest of the development. And then the second thing that we agreed on was is that we wanted these to be, units to be able to be sold and occupied as quickly as possible because simply having inclusionary lots in a development did not achieve the objectives. And to their credit, I would tell you, the plan calls for each of these units, each 62 of these units to be detached, single-family homes, a minimum of 11,000 square feet. They're going to be through, three-bedroom, two-bath. And as you saw in the representations, they are all going to be embedded as part of this development. Just to give you the highlights, which are included in the agreement itself, it, the, under the ordinance, we have to set a maximum price for each, for each unit. That's established in the city's local housing assistance plan is $224,000. And then we set, we set an average sales price. And in this particular case, it's 186,224. There's a formula prescribed in the ordinance that we followed and implemented to come up to that amount. Now, there is a part of this action where we're requesting that you allocate $575,000 out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we would use to, as a backstop to agree to purchase a maximum of three units if they have been on the market for more than 12 months without us being able to identify a buyer. The rationale behind that is, is that that will provide encouragement for the developer to build model units, in which case then that we'd be able to use as the basis of sales. I think it is our intention that that would, that provision would never be implemented, but it was a concession that we were, we were willing to make in the development process, or in the negotiation process, to get us to the point where we needed to get to have an agreeable agreement, pile of product. I will tell you that my staff, we have met with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, met with a group of their lenders approximately two months ago, went over the specifics of this particular project. The, there was a lot of enthusiasm and excitement. The lenders felt that this was going to be a very marketable product, that they felt like they would be able to, to identify buyers. Also met with the, the Lenders Consortium leadership as well. They echoed the same thing. So we will be working now, assuming this agreement is approved, we'll be working with them to put together a marketing plan in conjunction with the developer so that we can get these units built and sold. And this will be an important milestone, I think, for the city's history of inclusionary housing ordinance.
Awesome. I just want to join in thanking you, Michael, who has been a stalwart on this for a number of years, and congratulate the city on its first project in this way. And also to the, to the developer for, for working- to the developer for for working with us on this. I get the sense that both parties really didn't want to make it work. I think it's an opportunity for it to be a standout for both the developer and also for the city. I am sensitive to the concern of the question that was raised earlier around how long these properties stay in the affordable housing inventory. And I'm somewhere between 30 years and and forever, and I'll tell you why. Because I recognize that for the people who will come into ownership of these homes, when they go to sale, they won't be able to realize the typical market value at the point of sale. But the higher public value to this is to increase affordable housing inventory over an extended period of time. Now, should we ever get to the point in this community where we no longer have to strive to achieve affordable housing, then maybe the commission of that day will have a different conversation around the the rules and regulations as it relates to this. But the intention is not for, you know, the first owner to be the first and only owner necessarily to benefit from this affordable housing stock. In my opinion, the intention is to have this stock available in this area for an extended period of time. So the only adjustment that I would, you know, advocate for would be us, you know, maybe we can begin the conversation and what it might mean to extend that from 10 years. And I recognize that this is our ordinance, and my assumption is is that this really doesn't have an impact on the developer, because the intention is to have those sold within 10 years. That remains a part of it. That probably is the area where they would have most concern. And our interest is in keeping the affordable housing inventory, I think, for a longer extended period of time.
Would that require an amendment to, I mean, a motion to amend the agreement, Michael?
It would. I couldn't make it, yeah.
Be appropriate?
Well, I mean, what I would suggest on that, I mean, we can't unilaterally change the agreement. If you wish us to renegotiate that, those terms, I think we'd have to take it back to the developer to do that, because the agreement is, was mutually agreed. So we can't unilaterally change the terms of the agreement.
Sure.
But I do want to comment on one thing, because I do consider myself to be an advocate for affordable housing as well, and I appreciate your comments. The starting point for the negotiations is the ordinance. And the ordinance specifies that that time period is the is the minimum threshold. Having been involved with the city for the years that I have in the negotiations, at least two of the sets of negotiations that went through on amending the inclusionary housing ordinance, I will tell you that the ordinance has always been a product of compromise between the development community and the affordable housing advocate community. So those terms were discussed at various times, and the end product in the ordinance that was ultimately adopted by the commission originally and as the amended version was a compromise.
Yeah. Was the 30-year option presented to this developer and rejected?
No, sir. We talked about a longer time period, but that we negotiated that, and that was not that was not acceptable. So a longer time period, I believe we had talked about possibly going to 15 to 20 years early in the development, but we focused on.
Would they have also, under the, under what you're proposing, the 15 to 20 years, would the developer have also had to hold it for that period of time unsold?
Well, the issue is, is that the time period for when the when the clocks start is when the actual unit is sold. So the developer would be responsible under the, in this particular agreement, the developers respond, the affordability process begins when the unit is sold. So until the unit is sold, that the, well, and when the unit is sold is when the clock starts ticking and the restricted covenants go on the property at that point.
Got it. Commissioner Miller.
All right. Well, I think the the bottom line for me here is that this ordinance has been on the books for all these years, and nobody's really using it. And what I've heard are stories like, set of 50 units, people build 49, and that sort of thing. So I think it's really important that these get out there and get on the ground. And my first thing, before I go any further, I'd like to ask you to please define inclusionary housing for everyone, because I want to make sure I'm clear on what that means and how that's different from affordable housing.
Yeah. So our definition of inclusionary housing on the ordinance is up to 100% of area median income. So actually, the ordinance targets 70 to 100% of AMI or area median income. Affordable housing is, is standard definition, is housing that is affordable for people at 80% or less of area median income. So the inclusionary housing ordinance, by its by its definition, is actually open to a larger class of buyers than the simple affordable housing market.
What's that number? Is okay for us to?
It changes.
It's based on family size, Commissioner. So, for example, for a family of four, right now, the maximum income for a family of four at 80% of AMI is $50,400. So you translate up that, it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000, $62,000 for a family of four would represent 100% of area median income.
Thank you.
All right. So I remember when this was discussed, it was really discussed as workforce housing, because there was a tremendous emphasis on trying to find homes that were in a price range of people that we, as the city of Tallahassee, pay, like police officers and, you know, public servants of all stripes, teachers, you know, that sort of thing. And those folks who, I mean, to be a teacher and be a single person is challenging. And so I've always thought of the inclusionary housing as workforce housing in those terms. It's been sad to see that it hasn't happened, you know, the, nothing came out of the inclusionary housing ordinance. And so I do appreciate the fact that this development is going to include those in the in the housing. Now, what I want to understand is that the 10-year period is that in, I'm not clear on whether that's in the ordinance and it requires an ordinance change.
Yeah.
The ordinance requires that there be a minimum of 10-years price restrictions on the inclusionary units.
All right. Thank you.
It's a minimum. Now, just to understand, this is a negotiation. It would not necessarily require an ordinance change. There are pieces in this agreement that are not in the ordinance.
It would require us to, for the developer to agree to those terms.
Well, and the point there is that this is the first time this has been used, and it's been on the books for 10 years. And so let's try to get going with this and tweak the next opportunity, because this is, we're finally getting somewhere with this ordinance.
Agreed. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. That was, that pretty much clarified the issue that I had. But I I would like for us, going forward, to Michael, during the, or Mr. City Manager, during the negotiations, address that issue, the, you know, 10 years to perpetuity. Because I think it is an important issue. We may not be able to amend this current agreement, but I think going forward, that should be part of the the negotiation.
I, I mean, just to, you should probably demystify a little bit the, because there are a lot of reasons that are thrown out there as to why no one is taking advantage of it. My understanding is, is largely, so Evening Rose was coming through and was preparing to take advantage of it, and then the bottom fell out of the real estate market. And that project never got built in the way that it was originally intended. But within the city limits, there are just not enough acreage, there's not enough acreage outside of Southwood and the English property for, and obviously now, this new parcel that we have brought on and that the Gazvin has evolved in, that provided enough acreage for us to accomplish it. So it isn't necessarily that it's been sitting still because nobody has found it opportune to take advantage of. It is that we've not seen the kind of large-track development, single-family units of this size outside of those developments that have been able to do it. This is the first time we've been, we've been able to accomplish it. I'm as eager as anybody else to see us actually have a success case, but I'm having a hard time understanding who is going to be hurt by extending it. Could you just, and I mean it sincerely, if you could articulate, who would be hurt by extend, outside of the homeowner, him or herself, who may want to reap the benefits of 10 years of selling the property and gaining whatever the market value might be after having gotten it significantly under market value? Aside from the individual, who's hurt by by that requirement?
And, Mayor, I'm not suggesting that someone's being hurt. I'm just suggesting that's a term of the agreement that we had, which is in this agreement that we had agreed to as part of the negotiation. So if we were going to change that, that would be something that the, both the city and the developer would have to agree to as a change in the agreement terms.
Well, I'm not, I mean, it's not my interest necessarily in to hold this item up, because I'd like to see it go forward as well. I also don't want to put the developer on the spot and say, will you do this at this time? But I could understand if there was an economic argument that said, we can't accomplish this, because we could never get the project funded if that requirement were on there. But if that isn't the concern, and to me, the only downside, should there be one, would be to the individual who has the home and may wish to sell it after the 10 years expire, that they won't get the benefit of the full assessed value of 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 market value of the home. I'm not concerned about that, because I think the larger public value interest, the reason why government is in this conversation at all, is because we recognize the need for expanded affordable housing inventory. Outside of that, we've got no business here, other than approving somebody's land, you know, permits and that kind of thing. So we're already in this deeper, and we're in it deeper because of of the public policy goal we're trying to achieve. So anyway, that, I, I want to be for it. I'm just not clear as to why this is a condition that cannot be meet, can't be met.
And I, I'm not suggesting that when we were in our negotiations, these, that terms came up, when we negotiated what we were to agree to, that was one of the the terms and conditions that the developer, we wanted, wanted us to stay with. Actually, we have a policy, we have a policy that goes with the ordinance that's built around a 10-year cycle. That's not to say that the policy is, can't be overruled or can't, but that is, the policy was based on a 10-year cycle.
Yeah. Commissioner Miller.
Well, my question is, what is, what effect does this have on comparables when another home goes up for sale? Say we're 10 years down the road, say we're eight years down the road, and, no, go back to 10, and these homes begin to to sell off. At that point, if it were still at the 186, how would that sale affect the values of the other homes in the area?
Well, it's speculation on my part on that, but I will tell you, we're only talking about 10% of the development itself. So I'm not sure, we had a discussion about whether that the, actually, the original restricted prices on those units would have an impact. I don't know that there was any determination, the feeling that this would materially detract from the comparables in the entire development, because it only represents 10% of the development size. So those those units, if, because they will be price-restricted at the outset of the project, and they will be priced at a price that is actually lower than the market-rate units, that, that, we don't believe that that's going to materially detract from the comps that are going to be generated for the 90 other percent of the units that are being built in the development.
I believe there is a motion, or is there not? Was there a motion made on this? There is no motion. Does anybody want to offer a motion?
I think Lou may.
Move approval. Is that?
Mr. Norvell, did you have something to share with us?
I'm sorry. You're sorry?
I was asking Mr. Norvell if he had anything to share with the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I have spoken to the attorney, Mr. Hunter, for the developer. I understand that they would be willing to contemplate potentially an extended time period. There may be some repercussions for extending this this time period. Just in a very brief discussion, the the existing policy, while the ordinance does reference a 10-year period, the the policy provides that after the 10 years, the restrictions lift. So not only are these restrictions on who's eligible, but there are also price controls on it. There may be some effects on on comparables when, for appraisals. We're not clear whether or not it's going to affect financing or the way lenders would look at this, too. But from what I understand, the developers is amenable to extending the the time period for the restrictions to 15 years.
Got it. Well, thank you all very much for the sort of on-the-spot concession there. I do think it serves a good purpose, and and I think you all are showing your full commitment to trying to see this work, and we appreciate that. Is there a motion to that extent?
Move approval of the item with 15 years.
Got it. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much, and thank you to the staff as well for your work on this. Commissioners, we're now.
Mayor, before we go on, I want to say this. I can remember this discussion, but it was 10 years ago, so forgive me for not having a clear memory about the whole thing. But it was hotly debated, and these timeframes were discussed, and there were reasons why it was at the 10 years. And for a life of me, I can't remember what they were, but it had something to do with the person being in the home, and should they be able to realize the value of the home, and, you know, that type of thing. Now, we're here, and we're looking at it again in a way that, I mean, I appreciate that the developers agreed to go the extra five years, but in a way that is not, in my view, the best way to make a policy change. So I just really needed to say that, because I know that this was a very hotly debated topic, and there were benefits and costs to doing it differently.
It was. And I was here, I don't know if you were on the commission at the time.
No, I wasn't. I was on the planning commission.
I was on the commission when it was originally adopted, and we wanted something much stronger. And we were experimenting, obviously, trying to figure out how to get something that would work and would also not, frankly, warrant us some kind of legal challenge. I mean, when we originally talked about this, it was under a mandatory situation. There were no, it wasn't just the incentives, that's when we had work groups and commissioners work two by two through those kinds of public policy considerations. But for a good while, we were, as commissioners, talking about how we make it mandatory, which means in the city limits, every single development 50 and above would have to segregate 10% of that property to be workforce housing. Now, that being said, we shouldn't, we shouldn't diminish, I think, the significance of what we just passed and what got achieved. It is a big milestone, I think, for this community, that all of us recognize the need for affordable housing. And you've got a developer who could quite frankly have gone out and just said, we want the, we own the land, and we want the max amount that is available, based on market conditions, for every single house we build. But that's not what we have here. That is a real community partnership. And I don't take issue with your concern around how it is we make public policy. I think your point there is well taken. That being said, I want to thank again the developers for your willingness and your flexibility and your commitment, quite frankly, to the same goal that we have, which is, yes, development, do it smartly, but also do in a way that makes it accessible for the range of workforce that we have here in this city. So, well, thank you for that.
Well, I have another question that's based on the decision we made here. We have a price range here, 186 to 224, and that's based on the median income today.
It will grow.
Does that fluctuate?
It grows. 2% or 3%?
Well, that's good.
Yes, there is a provision in the ordinance that provides for annual adjustments to it based on on the formula, but there's also a floor that says 2% is is the maximum.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, we're now down to item 13.07. City manager.
Item 1307, staff recommends a public-sector linear infrastructure variance for the Weems Road Extension Project. The variance is needed because of the proposed roadway corridor will have unavoidable encroachments into some conservation and preservation areas, where construction impacts to build the roadway typically cannot be permitted. It would also allow for the fee in lieu for unavoidable tree impacts to be calculated using the county-wide environmental standard. Karen Jumminville and Steve Schaefer are here to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second on option one. All those in favor of the item, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes four to zero. Commissioners, we're now at the portion of the meeting to hear from un-agenda speakers. Mr. Treasury Clerk, are there any speakers?
Yes, Mayor. We do have several speakers tonight. The first is Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Stanley Sims. Speakers have three minutes for their comments. If there is anyone who wishes to speak and has not filled out a speaker form, those are located on the table in the back.
Many of you may not know, but for about 10 years, I worked for the Office of the Attorney General. One thing we were told the first day, second day at the latest, about our job, is always remember, figures don't lie, but liars do figure. remember, figures don't lie, but liars do figure. Recently, I had an opportunity to file an ethics complaint with our new ethics board. Basically, what I asked them to do several months ago was when I found out that a City of Tallahassee lobbyist, Adam Corey, campaign treasurer of our mayor, went and was bribing several city employees, I thought that would be something the ethics commission should look at, the ethics board. The board passed that over to Reese Goode to investigate. After several months, I got a copy just a few days ago of the investigation of that report. It reminded me of what I learned as an auditor years ago. Unfortunately, it seems the purpose of this report was to see if the city could make the facts about the ticket scandal simply go away. For example, there was several things that wasn't asked. One, why didn't the report identify and name all city employees that were getting these tickets? Why didn't they investigate and look at the complete season, not just one game? Third, in calculating the value of these tickets, why did they eliminate the food and liquor, and it flows heavily up there? And finally, why didn't they report the number of tickets that each city employee gave? This is completely a worthless report, and the individuals here should ask that it be done again. I've always thought that the city hall in the last several years has been a joke. We can see this Tallahassee Democrat up here kind of agrees with the character, comic characters, and even Gil Ziffer at Tiger Bay was explaining this report. He said the city has spatial ticket offers. If you want to buy one season ticket, it costs you $99.99. Two tickets will cost you $49.99 apiece, and three tickets will cost you $33.33. Now, there was some laughter, but I don't think that a scandal and bribery of city employees is anything anyone should laugh about, and especially a city commissioner. Thank you very much.
Right. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Stanley Sims, followed by Rajesh Shikhar.
Commissioner, I know I said the football frenzy, but I think that he has eloquently done that. I think that tonight is just something more important, and that's fair ass accessibility. I'm sitting here tonight because I'm just really disappointed. I've been in this city before Reese came here. And when someone, discrimination with a smile is still discrimination. I'm so disappointed that Scott, who knows my mom, knows me, knows my passion. I have difficulty reaching you now. I get softball answers from Allie. You, I've cried out to you because I honestly feel, I don't know why you are afraid of me, I honestly feel, Ms. Miller, that you know that this is a credible program. Now, why do you run from me? I don't know because they have you on lock.
We've discussed this.
I only have three minutes, so, I only have three minutes. But this guy has a lot of power. Mayor, I can't even talk to you. All of my calls are routed specially. And I don't understand that. I sit here just bumble where I have tried to explain to you that my civil rights have been, and where I come from, silence give consent because I've seen Commissioner Miller sit up here and advocate because when we were going to go to the dummy down system for a city manager, one of her attorneys didn't get a job. She labored. She met with that person. Here, I had eight of my personal friends shot down in the street, and you did a presentation about get community engaged, take responsibility. Here's an ex-felon who knows it. I've been to prison. I've experienced these things. I worked with an individual, I went to school with Cynthia Barber, who knows me before I knew me. That's right. I went to, her sister was in my graduating class. And everything they have asked of us to make, they say, if you're going to do this because you're an ex-felon, you got to have this. We went and got it. Here's what's disappointing. Every deadline that your staff, Mr. Reese, have given us, they've broken it. They have never did it. I've sit now, and I appreciate that Catherine finally returned a message to me and set up a meeting for me to meet with you on May 1st. I'm praying that that May 1st, Commissioner Curtis Richardson, well, we can't have a beer summit, but maybe we can have a clear water summit? And I want to foment and go live in your office to let the citizens of Tallahassee know that we're moving in a forward, in a positive direction.
Excuse me, that's three minutes? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Next speaker?
Next is Rajesh Shikhar.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity for me to speak here. This is just a request. As we move in adding new parks to the city, could there be a cricket field included in it exclusively for the cricket playing community, please? That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
That is the last speaker we have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much to all of those who gave public comment this evening. Commissioners, are there any thoughts, comments, and sharing of ideas? All right, saying no, we stand in adjournment. Thank you.